I think that was a fun stuff, right? Okay, great. Thank you so much. I'll call the meeting of the Falmouth School Committee to order for May 27th. Please join me in the bunch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you can all please remain standing for a moment of silence. As everyone knows, we lost a high school student at the evening of prom, Ava Lodeko. And we're just heartbroken for her family and all of her friends. Thank you. Lori, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Kelly said, it is heartbreaking to see such a beautiful life just in so early. Ava was so well-liked by her peers and her educators at school. The loss is just felt by so many, as evidenced this afternoon. But they're just going to live forever within us. And I'm just, it's been a very difficult week. And I just, I want to just give a shout out for our students at the high school. I'm just so impressed of how they've been handling so many of the situations from, you know, they gave up, you know, things that they were doing as a senior class last week because it just, it didn't feel right. Friday, they, they made it a pink t-shirt day because Ava's favorite color is pink. They met as a group and we had Riverside actually consult with them about how do you get through this and how do you lead a senior group during this time? And they've just done it with such grace and, and just so adult, when it's even hard for adults to, to deal with such situations. But they've done such a great job in making decisions and, you know, I mean, talking about, you know, just the next two weeks, you know, we have senior week coming up. We have graduation and it's just, it's, it's so hard, but they're doing it just beautifully with grace. And I just really want to talk about, you know, even during this hard time, our kids just rise to the top as we would expect. Thank you. And to Ava's family, you know, we just, our thoughts and prayers are with you.
Thank you. Sue, could you start us with the mission statement, please?
Falmouth Public Schools' mission, the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Falmouth Public School vision, Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I remind everyone the meeting's being recorded. Any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording, either in person or online, please notify me as chair by raising your hand. Is anyone making a recording? Sorry, I don't have any problems yet. Okay. All right. Thank you. First on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items not on the agenda and should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items that are on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the discussion of an item. Additional comments can always be sent to us at our email address, Do we have anyone for public comment? It's actually on the agenda. I'm guessing you're going to speak about the dress code. So we can't do it during public comment. You can do it during the part of the meeting that has, anyone else for a public comment?
Donnie Kirk. On April 3rd, I attended the open forum about the NSSEC report. A question was brought up, how can we get information, questions, and ideas over to the Building Needs Task Force? We were told we can use the website, we can email Lori directly, and she would send those emails to the Building Needs. We suggested an email address for Building Needs and Lori ensured us she would pass the information along. On April 6th, I thoughtfully put all my ideas, questions, and crunch numbers from the NSSEC report for different scenarios that are being proposed. I was sent to Lori, but it was sent to Lori, School Committee Select Board, and Dr. Infugie. On April 29th, I attended the Building Needs. And once you know, my email wasn't shared with the task force and definitely wasn't printed and handed out like Peter Clark's email. It hasn't been shared since with the task force. I also haven't heard Lori share any feedback from the feedback forms with the task force, with the school committee, or put any information on the website. So I'm here tonight, May 27th, 51 days since my original email, asking, how do I get my email shared with the task force? This entire experience has been frustrating, especially when you go all around town and different committees and subcommittees welcome the public's information, knowledge, and ideas. It seems like you really don't want our input and you don't want to communicate with us.
DM, I thought you raised your hand.
I did. Thank you. Thanks for that. Good evening, DM Rockwood, community member and staff member. If I've learned one thing in all my years, it's that animosity gets us nowhere. But I've also learned that neither does disrespect. Education comes in many forms and certainly not always from a book. We learn from each other and we learn by listening. We learn through discussion, open engagement, and an ability to accept different opinions and to embrace the lessons offered by alternate perspectives. We learn through a willingness to change our minds and broaden our horizons. These are the fundamentals of a growth mindset, which we happen to teach in our school system. With that being said, I respectfully remind this committee that you have protocols to follow. In fact, they are a thoughtful and inclusive list of expectations created by and for yourselves. For example, number 10 of "In Our Communications" reads, "Work to build trust between and among school committee members, the superintendent, and the school and town administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement, by maintaining an open environment where each member, the superintendent, and the public is empowered to freely express opinions, concerns, and ideas." Additionally, number 14 of "In Our Decision-Making" states, "Engage in critical thinking, expecting all committee members to freely offer differing points of view as part of the discussion prior to making a board decision." The faces and voices in front of you are here to work with you, not against you. As we have a common goal, I ask that you allow for informed and balanced discussion by following your own protocols. And I also wish to congratulate all three of you on your results.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, next up, we have an update from the White Dog Club. Oh, I didn't look to see his kitty. Is it kitty?
Kitty, oh, yes.
Thank you. Can you promote her?
Let me say a word. Okay, I would like to introduce Kitty Hendricks, who will provide a comprehensive report to the committee. But before I turn it over to Kitty, I just want to say thank you to the tribe for providing lunch bunches, academic support, the drums and dancing ceremonies, and the curriculum development support, as well as our ongoing quarterly meetings that just help shape our, our schools into just a richer place for all students. So thank you and welcome, Kitty.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, so just here to report on the goings-on in the Education Department. We have a lot, we have two, two working grants right now. One is the Natri Grant, which is the Native American Teacher Retention Initiative. And that's going strong. Right now, we have 14, actually 14 participants, teachers and students going to school for education. And we have two more in the, on the pipeline per se. And which is, the grant is to help support teachers and, you know, steer them on the right pathway in order to take their skills back to the community when they have their degrees and to come and teach in the public schools that we have our students in. And so there's a whole slew of ways that we do support them financially and also support them with, you know, books and all the things that they would need for their school, for schooling. Another grant is my grant, which is the Indian Education Grant. And we are busy working with our new set of collaborators, the Center for Coastal Studies, the National Seashore, and the Pleasant Bay Community Boating. All of these partners that we have just started a relationship with, are offering services for tribal, tribal camp kids and tribal students to use their facilities and to facilitate programming and help to integrate into present programming that I offer for Native American students. So that's exciting collaboration. It opens us up to a floating classroom, which is an all-electric pontoon boat. And they have activities and all kinds of ways that they can do hands-on learning while they're on the boat, cruising Pleasant Bay and Harwich. And they're also offering sailing lessons for the kids. So we, we have a few things going on with them for my summer camp. The summer camp starts July 14th and it runs till August 8th. And that's for K through 5th graders. And that is a five-day-a-week camp at 8:30 to 4:30. Also going on is that I'm working with the Cape Cod Children's Museum on a new exhibit. And it's a kitchen, it's outdoor kitchen and there's a fire pit. Of course, there's no fire, but there's ways that kids can learn, you know, where food comes from. It's part of their food-to-table program that they have going on outside to the right of the children's museum. So the kids will be able to sit around the fire pit and we talk about what's, what's important and what's seasonal and what kind of ingredients and what kind of dishes you can make with things that you go out and forage or, or pick fresh food and berries and those kind of things. So we're just kind of in the development phase right now, but it's an Indian education-supported exhibit. And we have a shade arbor as well, where the kids can sit around in, under that arbor. And it's an outdoor cooking site. What else do we have going on? That's about it for now. Oh, we just finished, we're finishing up on the 14-week series for educators through the Natri Grant. And Saturday, they took a tour of Mashpee. There were 22 in attendance. A lot of teachers were from Falmouth, Barnstable, Mashpee, and a couple of people from off Cape. And I think that's about it that I have to share with you today.
Thank you. That is quite a list. That's, we always love hearing what you're up to because it's always amazing.
And we're busy over at Waquai Bay as well with field trips for all the districts, Sandwich, Mashpee, Falmouth, and doing programs on Cuddy Hunk and also Penne Keys.
Oh, nice. Quick question, the summer camps, are they full or should we?
Yeah, filled up about within four, four days. It's 20, we take 25 kids.
I'm not surprised, but I've not, I wanted to know if we could share. Any questions for Kitty?
Oh, yeah, that's would have been a great idea. Thank you.
I had seen on your website that you have the garden, community garden at Mochip Farm.
Yes.
I was wondering if the foraging and the outdoor kitchen and all that is integrated with your gardens? Like, do you have a curriculum at the garden at all?
Actually, that's the Corn Sisters Program. And as I know now, they just really are reaching out to the parents, the, the women in the corn circle. So they're just, I don't, they are not connected with the program that I'm running right now. But we are developing curriculum with the many Thanksgivings concept, where we have, you know, not just one Thanksgiving, but seasonal Thanksgivings and how we celebrate those and also to support, you know, backyard gardens and education for families to grow their own food and buy locally and all that we need to do as a community.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Kitty, for all that you're, the entire program is doing for the kids of Falmouth. We truly appreciate it. And on a personal note, congratulations on We Are the Land. It was absolutely spectacular.
Oh, oh, good. I'm glad you got a chance to see it.
I wish all of our kids could see it. It was, it was really powerful and beautiful and genuine.
Yeah, we're going to bring it to Zitierian next year, so it's kind of local still within striking distance. So.
Terry, Terry had a question for you.
I visit Quashnet School in Mashpee every week. And I'm really impressed that over the water fountain and on the doorways, it's instructions in English and the Wampeknook language.
Oh, yeah.
That's just really a great inspiration of the kids of their heritage in that, in that town, all over the Cape, actually, but anyway.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming, so I'm glad you noticed that and, and thanks for mentioning it. But we want to do more of that. We just have to, just get it out there, get it out there to the community members first. But we also need to educate and have it present, you know, like on street signs, more things like that and place names and those kind of things have to be done. The next step. And I forgot to mention that I had a great time at Falmouth High School. We did an outdoor cooking with, with the class there, the, I think it's the garden class. And we, we prepared a big soup with some of their greens that they had and had a good time cooking with them. It was fun.
Thank you. Well, thanks so much for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Yep, thanks. Alrighty, thanks. Good night.
Bye, Kitty.
Always great hearing from them. And next up is first read on handbook policy revisions and a discussion on all the different revisions.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we will be presenting the revised policy portions of the handbook. Sections include Code of Conduct, Cell Phone Use, and Dress Code. Before I turn it over to Mary Gans to review the policy sections, I would like to first focus on the Lawrence School Dress Code specifically. So we have had public comment by one of our parents and a request by school committee members to have this on the agenda to learn more. The first, Tom will share information about the Dress for Success Initiative. Then Mary Gans will reference the law in this regard. Mary has been consistent with her analysis. And attorney Andy Wall from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane has concurred with attorney Gans' analysis. Before I turn it over to Tom, I would like to reiterate to the committee that Tom and I plan to conduct a comprehensive review of the Dress for Success Initiative as part of our refreshing all protocols for Lawrence. Once we learn whether we will be renovating the school, closing it down, and then reopening. So that was part of that process. However, if it is important to the school committee to expedite the timeline, then I would ask that you allow us to conduct a full, comprehensive review next school year, which will include all stakeholder input through surveys and focus groups, opening, spanning well beyond the current Lawrence families and students. This review would take up several months of time. I want to assure everyone that I am not tied to an outcome of the comprehensive review, but I do believe in the review process. And whatever the outcome, I think the school committee can feel more assured if we have made sure that the outcome reflects the community wishes. This initiative has been in place well before myself and before Tom in 2011. And I believe that we owe the respect to the process that was undertaken at that time and the processes since then to give it its, its due. And so whether the outcome is to continue with it, to modify it, or to eliminate it, I think that we should take that time. As a practical matter, there's just not enough time to conduct that review before the end of the year and give parents enough time to, to notify of any potential changes for next year. So on the next meeting, this is first read tonight, just to remind everyone. So at our next meeting, we'll be voting on the handbook revisions. And I just asked that, that you vote the Dress for Success along with all the dress code policies as written for the 25, 26 school year. And so at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Tom Bushy and then followed by Mary Gans.
You?
Oh, I'm Tom.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just, I'm trying.
First, well, the second slide really is a, an overview of some, a brief history of the Dress for Success Initiative. So my name is Tom Bushy and the principal of Lawrence School. It's nice to see everybody and share the words that Kelly and Lori spoke earlier during the meeting. So. So the Innovation School, Lawrence became an innovation school, like Dr. Dora was saying, in 2011. In my, my third year, we renewed the plans status in 2017. And then during COVID, the innovation status, the innovation school status lapsed. So. Doesn't mean that it's, that we can't explore that as an option down the road, but I wanted to call out a couple of the lasting initiatives. In addition to the Dress for Success, we have preserved some flexibility with scheduling, a literacy committee that still thrives and takes us through a building-based PD every year. And of course, we have the town meeting structured for our students during, for our student government. Some of the developments to the guidelines that have occurred over the course of the year were ones that, you know, seemed pretty obvious now, but at the time may not have, may not have been when the plan was first written. But we took efforts to make the language around the Dress for Success Guidelines gender-neutral. And of course, we had to take into consideration changes in fashion. For example, like turtlenecks, some people think they're always popular, some people don't like them. And the way we have shared developments on the guidelines is through visual promotions that we share with families in the summer. And we also have promote our Be in the Know. And then over, over the course of the year, we talk about what the dress guidelines are. And we also have implemented a more formal, relaxed dress guideline in an effort to formalize the process of when students are able to, like, you know, if we're going on a field trip or a scenario where we're incentivizing the relaxed dress for students. So if we can go to the next slide for daily practices, pretty simply, the students come to the building. They all report to advisory, which is like a homeroom structure. And we say the pledge and then we do a dress for success check and ask the folks in the advisories to read through the announcements. And dress for success check happens pretty seamlessly and quickly. And then we move on with our school day. Our guidance counselors are immensely supportive of students if there's ever a need and even preaddressing scenarios where we know there may be a financial hardship. And, and, you know, over the course of the day or, or whatever it is, if something comes up, a student slips during outdoor time and needs to change his clothes because they, you know, stomped through a puddle or whatever, these things occur pretty seamlessly. We can go to some annual developments here. You know, we get donations over the course of the year. Periodically, we'll promote to families or community members who are asking how they can help donate gently worn clothes, which we have a, we have a really big repertoire of clothing that we can help, help out students on a daily basis if needed. And we also have some charitable organizations that will help students out if there's a greater need. We do send reminders, like I was saying before, to students, staff, and families regarding seasonal changes. For example, when the weather starts to get cold, we will remind folks, you know, that jackets are welcome to come into the school building. They can use them for outdoor time, but when they come back, they've got to go to the lockers. As far as the building-based, building-based reflective action, we, you know, we do try to talk about Dress for Success pretty routinely. These conversations might occur at a team leader meeting. It might occur at a faculty meeting. And I will, and I will say, like Dr. Dora mentioned before, there's going to be, you know, we're anticipating a greater level of interest in talking about next steps with Dress for Success Initiative. And then lastly, for the annual developments, we do annually have the students who participate in the warrant committee develop articles which they'll, they'll vote on. And over time, a number of amendments have been made to the Dress for Success Guidelines that have been brought forward by kids. For example, this, this most recent one, this most recent one, solid colors for all bottoms, whereas previously they were only allowed black, white, gray, maroon, undergreen, navy blue, khaki. And that's it for the annual developments. And then just in an effort to ensure that, you know, the Dress for Success Guidelines are still something that was important to faculty and staff at the Lawrence School. We could recently send a survey, anonymous survey, to staff members. And 85% of staff are in support of the Dress for Success. As you can see, 15% opposed. And the second question on the survey was simply asking for developments to the, to the Dress for Success Guidelines. And you could see that 60 felt it was amended appropriately, 23.3 felt it was too restrictive, and 16.7 felt it should be more restrictive. And another part of the, really just reflection that we do over the course of the year is to, is to gauge some other faculty or school-based groups and whether they are in support of the Dress for Success Initiative. And as you can see, some groups that have indicated support this year were the parent-teacher organization, the school council, our department heads, our team leaders, and our equity team. So that's my.
Turn that over to, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
So there are two distinct issues that I want us to keep in mind when we think about the legal analysis. And one is whether the dress code passes legal muster versus if people disagree with components of the dress code or are unhappy with it. Just because someone's unhappy with dress code doesn't make it unlawful. So I am just speaking to, you know, is the dress code, in my opinion, legally defensible under applicable laws? And as Lori said, I conferred with Andy Wa, who, as you know, also is another outside counsel for the district. He handles, he handles certain matters that I don't handle. And he and I are in full agreement with my opinion, or our opinion. So just for some background, in 2013, there was a PRS complaint filed about the dress code, which was shortly after it was implemented in 2011. And a parent at the time had claimed that the dress code violated Mash Generalized Chapter 71, Section 82, which I'll talk a little bit more in a, in a minute. And in that opinion, Desi said it had no basis on which to invalidate the district's approval of the dress code. The Massachusetts courts have not yet addressed whether this type of dress code is consistent with or contrary to student rights of free expression under Section 82 or as a matter of First Amendment constitutional law. Some courts and other jurisdictions have dismissed First Amendment challenges to student dress codes when they are content neutral, that is, does not suppress a particular message and furthers an important educational. That is, does not suppress a particular message and furthers an important educational interest. And as you know, there was a twenty twenty-five Desi PRS complaint and Desi simply said it's a local decision. This is consistent with Desi's perspective on school uniform dress codes, which I've said, you know, it's essentially a school uniform. And it is content neutral because it's uniformly applied and it is not suppressing or. It's not suppressing a certain viewpoint or a certain content in clothing. In, there's a Desi document regarding school uniforms, it's actually a school enrollment information for children who have lost their housing. And one of the questions is, do my children need school uniforms? And Desi says. Most Massachusetts public schools do not require uniforms, but some do. If the school your child is enrolling in requires uniforms, it should provide your child with a uniform if you cannot afford one. And then, this is a while ago, but in a two thirty two thousand fourteen Boston Globe article, it was entitled More Public Schools Try Out Student Uniforms. And there was a Desi spokesperson who said Desi does not track how many public schools require students to wear uniforms. We don't keep data on this, said department spokesperson, individual districts determine their policies on uniforms. So again. It's a it's a district level. Excuse me, in two thousand twenty-two. The Lawrence Public Schools was renewing its turnaround plan and it was endorsed by Desi, former Commissioner Riley. And part of that plan actually included expansion of the high school uniform and Desi endorsed that. So Desi clearly is not advising school districts that they can't have dress clothes like this. Desi is not dispositive necessarily on the issue, obviously, it would be a legislative issue or a court of law issue. But clearly, Desi is not advising school districts against it. There are many, many individual schools and school districts in Massachusetts that have similar uniform content neutral policies. So if Lawrence's policy is in violation, there are many other schools that are that are in violation of the law. In terms of the lawfulness, so there are a couple of statutes that we've heard about. Mass General Law Chapter seventy-one, section eighty-two, which says. The rights of students to freedom of expression in the public schools of the Commonwealth shall not be abridged, provided that such rights shall not cause any disruption or disorder within the school. Then there's another statute, Mass General Law Chapter seventy-one, Section eighty-three. That statute says, school officials shall not abridge the rights of students as to personal dress and appearance, except if such officials determine that such personal dress and appearance violate reasonable standards of health, safety and cleanliness. Section eighty-three doesn't apply to Falmouth, it's a local option statute. Which only applies in cities and towns that have adopted the statute. And Section eighty-three does not appear on the list of statutes that Falmouth has adopted on the town website. So that one doesn't apply. Section eighty-two arguably applies, however, the statute itself very specifically says. It applies to secondary public students in public secondary schools. And there is the the law does not define what would constitute a public secondary school. Desi has some definitions about what may constitute a secondary school. Desi actually classifies for certain purposes Lawrence as a middle school and not as a secondary school. But Desi's determination of what constitutes a secondary school is not necessarily dispositive of what a court of law might say what constitutes a secondary school. Even if Lawrence were considered a secondary school, however, I would still say this passes legal muster, that this is a lawful dress code policy. And. There was a there was a two thousand one Superior Court case in Brockton where a seventh grade student attending South Junior High School in Brockton, which served grade seven and eight. Where a parent had complained, filed a complaint about under Chapter seventy-one, Section eighty-two. And the judge even there said, it is not at all clear whether a junior high school or a middle school is a secondary school within the meaning. Of General Law Chapter seventy-one, Section eighty-two. Fortunately, this court need not decide the issue because the plaintiff at the hearing agreed to dismiss this count. So, as I said, it's a content neutral dress code, it's not implement implemented as an attempt to curtail any particular viewpoint or message. And in dress code cases, although Massachusetts still. Has not addressed had a legal case that addresses this type of dress code. In matters involving student conduct and student dress. The courts give significant deference to the decisions of the local educators and the building administration in terms of what they deem acceptable within their buildings and. I've mentioned before that there's a LM versus Middleborough case that went all the way to the First Circuit Court of Appeals and in fact was. Appealed to the United States Supreme Court and coincidentally, just today, the United States Supreme Court refused to hear the appeal and. Which means the First Circuit Court decision stands as precedent. And in that case, that was the case where a student, it's distinguishable, but the deference is is what's important here. In that case, the student showed up to school with a shirt that said there are only two genders and the school prohibited him from wearing it. Now, interestingly, the parent did not, or the case, the decision doesn't even reference. General Law Chapter seventy-one, Section eighty-two, it's only based on First Amendment rights and Fourteenth Amendment rights on how to raise your children. I don't know if they didn't, I wasn't involved in the case, obviously, and I didn't read all the briefs underlying it that led to it. I don't know if there was a decision made that they weren't even going to bother with Section eighty-two because it was a a middle school student and not a secondary school. I can't say that, however. The most important part of that decision for our purposes is that the court said, the First Circuit Court of Appeals, the judge said. Courts have repeatedly emphasized the necessary discretion school officials must exercise and the attendant deference owed to many of their decisions. And then by at the end, the judge said, we close by emphasizing a point that may be obvious but should not be overlooked. The question here is not whether the T-shirt should have been barred, the question is who should decide whether to bar them, educators or federal judges? Based on the Tinker case, the case is applying in the specific record here, we cannot say that in this instance. The Constitution assigns the sensitive and potentially consequential judgment about what would make an environment conducive to learning at the middle school to us, the federal court. Rather than to the educators closest to the scene. So, you know, we're talking about listening to teachers and do deference to educators. And I think that we really need to keep that in mind when we're thinking about this dress for success. I mentioned the Supreme Court just decided not to hear that. Hey, so that decision stands. It is viewed as a very positive decision for school districts and for administrators in terms of enforcing student conduct and student dress. And then there's a very important element that I want to point out that applies to uniform type dress codes and freedom of expression. So, nonverbal, non-written expression, so you know, yoga pants, leggings, things that are not allowed under there. Those don't necessarily carry a message, they are, you're wearing, you know, I'm wearing pink pants today, do they actually express a message? And. Under the law, under constitutional law, to bring a free speech claim regarding actions rather than words. Claimants must show that their conduct has an intent to convey a particularized message. And the light that the likelihood is great that the message will be understood by those who view it. So. Me wearing my pink, I think I'm conveying a message, you may have no idea what that message is. You have to be conveying a particular message with what you're wearing and the audience would understand it in order for it to even. Be protected by the First Amendment. So there's a very interesting case out of the Sixth Circuit, which it's out of Kentucky, the Sixth Circuit involves Kentucky, Michigan, Ohio and Tennessee. It is not binding in binding precedent in Massachusetts, which is the First Circuit, but it's certainly instructive. And in this case, it's the Blau case from two thousand three, the Sixth Circuit rejected the parents' challenge to their daughter's middle school. Content is actually similar to the Lawrence dress code. And they said that the dress code did not violate the student's First Amendment rights of speech, freedom of speech. That the dress code did not violate the parent's fundamental right under the Fourteenth Amendment to wear the clothes of one's choosing to public school. And to the right of the parent under the Fourteenth Amendment to educate his or her child. And I want, I'm going to read, it's a little bit of a lengthy quote from the decision, but I think it's important because it. Very much speaks to the type of dress code that the Lawrence School has, and this is what the court said. Under these circumstances, the parents have not met their burden of showing that the First Amendment protects the student's conduct. Which in this instance amounts to nothing more than a generalized and vague desire to express her middle school individuality. As the student stated in her deposition, she does not wish to convey any particular message. But wishes only to wear clothes that she thinks look nice on her and that she feels good in. And the father has not pointed to any particularized message that the student wishes to convey. In his deposition, he stated only that the dress code hinders her own ability to wear clothing that she likes, but it did not suggest what message. The clothing she likes would convey. It is not lost on us that in the eyes of a twelve-year-old, looking nice and feeling good about the clothing one wears are important and rightly or wrongly may be enough to make or break a kid's day. Style and taste in clothing, it also is true, may be one of the first ways in which children learn to express their individuality and engage in self-expression. And as every parent knows or will soon learn, it is often through choices in clothing that children first learn how to challenge authority, though usually authority in the form of their parents, not their school. Which is perhaps the reason why parents urge schools to adopt dress codes in the first place. Even so, the First Amendment does not protect such vague and attenuated notions of expression, namely. Self-expression through any and all clothing that a twelve-year-old wait may wish to wear on a given day. To meet the modest requirements for bringing an expressive conduct claim within the umbrella of protection provided by the First Amendment. The claimant at a minimum must show that the desired conduct, that is the desired clothing. Can fairly be described as imbued with elements of communication. Which conveys a particularized message that will be understood by those who view it, the parents have not made that showing. So. That's it in a nutshell, it's a content neutral dress code, it's not suppressing viewpoints and it. Is a similar dress code was was fully upheld in another district where a student wanted to go to school just wearing clothes. That she felt more comfortable in than what was prescribed by the dress code.
We have more slides. Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so. I guess. Do you want to continue with? The handbook policies or the handbook policies, which was next time, I mean, less there's.
Can we speak now?
Yes, you're welcome. Yes, you're welcome to, I know you have a handout.
Well, you do want to. Okay, James, thank you much.
And I know we have some educators here. I don't get to hear.
More than two minutes?
No, two, still two minutes, I don't know how many people are going to speak.
I'm Megan Boddy. This time has come to ask yourself why it is so important to the administration at Falmouth Public Schools to continue this outdated. Unethical and unpopular dress code. Based on the feelings of the Commonwealth. In the first draft of the proposal for the dress code at Lawrence School, allowing all colors. It begs the question, why? Why is the proposal to release tiny bits of this dress code incrementally back to students? How many years do we have to slowly give items back? Until students have their rights to dress and appear. As they do in elementary school, lower middle school and high school. Why is this administration comfortable allowing grades pay through six the right to dress, but not seven and eight? And then allow it again in nine through twelve, a state of goal this year with consistency throughout the district. Maintaining this unequal, inconsistent and discriminatory dress code is in direct conflict with that goal. I'm sure the principal will come and tell you that he supports the dress code. And that the teachers that he invited will send you the same message, however, I think it's more important to ask the actual stakeholders, how they feel, the students. They're the ones being directly affected by this implementation. When you get dressed in the morning, it's a way of expressing yourself and identifying you in and to the world. You choose what feels good and what makes you you. The students at Lawrence do not have the ability to do this. And this is an important part of learning who you are in the world and who you will need to and you will need to have this skill every day for your entire life. Something this district is taking away and then giving it back after two short years. I would like once again for you to seriously consider the gravity of this decision. So that we can create a space that's best for our students and more conducive to the actual goal learning. There are approximately one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four non-charter public schools in Massachusetts. Six of which have similar dress codes. I heard some surveys, but no numbers, there's no data. So the numbers are really important. If this dress code was beneficial for children, then more schools would have more pop, this would be more popular in the Commonwealth.
Megan, you're welcome to either leave it for us or if you want to hand out, I see you have.
I have the handouts for all the school committee members and River is going to talk for two minutes.
Absolutely. Hi, River.
Hello, everybody, my name is River and I'm in the fifth grade at Morse Pond School. I would like to say that my mother did not force me to attend this. And that I am here because I want to advocate for myself and the friends I have that oppose the Lawrence School dress code. I believe that students should have the right to wear what they choose to wear with few restrictions. The problem I have with the dress code is that all the current clothes that make up part of my identity would be unwearable for two years. I would have to wear very unfamiliar clothing that would make you feel gloomy and uncomfortable. I hope you will listen to my words tonight and make a thoughtful and informed decision, which will affect many students at Lawrence School. I know for one that it will affect me, thank you.
For sharing. Do we have anyone else that wanted to speak about it? If you just want to come on up one at a time, please. And make sure you state your name so we know who you are. Thanks.
Evening, everyone, I'm Jessen Zakowski from North Falmouth, the father of three Falmouth students. One in kindergarten and two currently at Lawrence. I want to take a brief while River and I disagree in our opinions, an exceptional job in presentation and.
Thanks, Megan.
Very impressive. Very much, and and as I look around, there are about forty of us in this room, all dress for success, and so we've all taken that over the course of our. Our lifetime and we've, you know, there are different colors, different styles represented. But we're all here to do business tonight and we're all here to do the business of Falmouth Public Schools and we take that very seriously. So I do think that that's the notion of dressing for success as opposed to the idea of a dress code. In in its stringency is very appropriate. I am very in favor of continuing with the Dress for Success Initiative because I do think it's an invaluable tool. Which can equip students by preparing them for customary standards in the workplace. As many will start jobs even while they're at Lawrence, my daughter has her first shift. Working in a restaurant on Saturday and she has uniform standards. Or that that she is expected to abide by in the work environment. Promoting professionalism, confidence and conformity in a setting among diverse colleagues and peers. Minimizing unnecessary distractions to the educational objectives. Caused by clothing concerns and the subsequent potential corrective actions that come along with some of those concerns. And abating some of the social stigma caused by some of the extrinsic value of specific brands, styles, cost of clothing, et cetera. As a parent of two current Lawrence students and a member of the parents Lawrence Parent Council as well. I can unequivocally attest to the initiative's effectiveness effectiveness towards these goals. It's consistent application from what I've seen throughout the student body. And I I encourage you to continue.
You're welcome to leave that if you wrote it down or you can email us.
Thank you for your consideration.
Can you email it as well?
I can certainly do that. Two guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Klein, I'm an eighth grade science teacher at Lawrence. And I wanted to, the comments that I'm going to make, I did this afternoon email to the school committee as well as Dr. Dure and Mr. Bushy. So this is the end of my third year at Lawrence and I previously worked at a school that had very different dress guidelines for students. The previous school had relatively loose regulations about what was appropriate for school and what was not. And as a result, because they were open to interpretation, the dress guidelines were routinely disregarded and students arrived. At school in a variety of outfits. When I started teaching at Lawrence in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. I appreciated the Dress for Success Guidelines and I still do. I firmly believe that having dress guidelines for students is important and appropriate. It levels the playing field, so to speak, when it comes to who has which brands of clothing. It also eliminates references to potentially inappropriate subject material by not including writing and graphics on their clothing. Especially in the current moment, language and pop culture references change constantly. And it's already a battle to stay on top of the slang that students are using in my classroom. I cannot imagine having to keep up with what students have written on their clothing as well. When I have forty-four minutes and twenty-three kids in my room and I have a science lesson to teach, my priority is on the science lesson. The Dress for Success Guidelines, while they don't allow for the full freedom that I realize most young people want, they do eliminate anxiety for some students. Who worry about looking cool or fitting in on a daily basis. I also believe that dressing for the occasion is important, I would not show up to work in my comfortable weekend wear because I am at school to work, not to lounge. I think that the feedback the school committee has received regarding the Dress for Success Guidelines at Lawrence School has opened up productive dialogue. I think that the feedback the school committee has received regarding the Dress for Success Guidelines at Lawrence School has opened up productive dialogue among staff members about the overarching goals of the initiative. It is healthy for any organization to revisit policies periodically to ask themselves if they are achieving their goal.
We do have the rest of it.
You have to answer it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Does anyone else want to come on up?
Everyone, I'm Miss Van Mooy. I'm the seventh grade art teacher at Lawrence. I don't know. See you next year. I'm in favor of the Fountain Dress for Success Initiative and I emailed the school committee several weeks ago when it first became this revised conversation to let you know how I felt about it. But I wanted to bring one last perspective. My children went through Fountain Public Schools. They are twenty-one and twenty-three. When they were twelve and thirteen year olds, they didn't want to wear the dress code. It was annoying and it was stressful. And I hadn't been a parent at Lawrence School and they hadn't been a student at Lawrence yet and they were nervous about how different it was going to be. And I asked them as young adults, what do you think about it now? And they said, that was a really good thing. I didn't have to worry about what to wear. It was one less thing we had to argue about and it was a really safe thing to be upset about. And as a teacher and a parent, I know it doesn't make things equal, but it's one less thing to deal with. Being a junior high student is hard. Being a junior high parent is also hard and it's one less thing that we have to debate about. And I think it's a good thing and I support it. I wish we had it K to twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone at the table want to speak? Any questions? Mike?
I had one to miss Van Mooy's point. Why do we do it at Lawrence but no other schools?
My understanding that this was part of the Innovation School, as Mr. Bushy had shared, and part of that application. They had decided to do that. So I don't know the committee or why, but it was, it was linked at that time to the Innovation School, which no other school is an Innovation School.
Excuse me, have more of an answer?
Thank you for having historical perspective. What can you share?
In twenty eleven, it was an initiative developed by the faculty and parents, a parents group at the Lawrence School. Dr. Nancy Taylor was the principal of the school at the time. And it was voted on by the whole faculty in regards to, there was a, the timeframe was different brand names were creating difficulty with parents in regards to who could, yes, or.
If you're talking about the cost of brand names, not vulgarity of brand names.
No. Cost of brand names, et cetera. So. It was just all part of the initiative that was sent to and approved by the state.
Then the second part of my question is why not? Why, why didn't it go to the high school then after that?
That I can't answer, but it, the initiative program gave.
I think it was just, the high school's not an innovation.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Any other questions on, or questions for Mary since we have her?
Oh, yeah. Kind of to that point, the, what Mary had said earlier about if Lawrence was a secondary school, she feels that the dress code would still, I think you said pass muster. So I wonder why we're not expanding it because I have heard, you know, privately in conversation with teachers and parents. I haven't had the opportunity to speak to students. So I don't know any seventh and eighth graders, but teachers and parents are in favor of it and all of them have said, pretty much all of them have said that they wish it went for more grades, which I found surprising and interesting. So if, if Lawrence was a secondary school and it would be okay by your recognition of it, part one of my question is why are we? Why would we not? Why would we only stay with two? Because I do hear the commentary and I think I said it before. We're aiming for consistency. We want things to be coherent from grade K to grade twelve. We're trying to do that with Power School. The grading reconfiguration, our equity audit. We want this streamlined effect across all the grades. And this is very strange to me. But so that's part one of that question. And part two, I think from my perspective is not a legal questions that I have. It's more what is success as defined here? To me, this is inconsistent arbitrary and a bit confusing for me to read through. There's no real, there's no real explanation of why yoga pants have now been added, but leggings have not. I, I've heard mostly the complaints have been about graphics and brands and hoodies. The complaint about hoodies being, if everyone has a hat or hoodie on in the hall and somebody yelled gun, you wouldn't know who it was. I get those things. There's just no explanation for the rest of it. And for me as a person who's looking at this policy and it's our job to make sure that it's consistent, clear, easy to follow. Not all parts of it make sense. And I wish there was some explanation for why, why are fleece pants allowed, but leggings are not, sweatpants are not? Why are yoga pants allowed, but, but leggings are not? It doesn't make sense. And I feel like if you want to have solid colors, no logos, no hoodies, those things can be consistent across all grades. We've already got no hoodies in, I believe Morse Pond and the high school has just been added with that. Why not just streamline it? This all seems kind of hard. Like I hear that they do this check in the morning. But it seems hard to make sure that all of these parts are always in compliance. And then my last point is that at this moment in this room, we have variegated colors, we have some brand names, we have denim, you're wearing lace. These things are sort of arbitrary to me and all of us, I believe, are successful. And I don't understand what the kids are, if the models in the society around them, parents and adults and teachers, people working at Hui, people who are all around them are dressing not for success. So I don't understand why this is written the way it is.
Nice. One more question about that. And this might be if it's okay through to Mary or, or Tom, Mr. Bushy. The, the second to last bit here says the administration may waive any requirements in cases involving extenuating circumstances, et cetera, et cetera. My, my question would be who makes that call?
The administration would make the call.
So.
Well, for example, I, I know we've had, even, even at Fountain High School, so no hats or hoods are allowed. But you have a student who has alopecia and they're, they're embarrassed. We'd allow them to wear a hat. Or you have a cultural religious reason. I need to wear a certain head, headwear. Of course, we're going to allow that. I mean, there are some exceptions that are required based on protected class status under the law. If I'm sure if Tom had a question, he'd confer with Lori and if it was a legal question, she would confer with me if it was acceptable.
Okay, I think that was my question. Thank you. That it wouldn't, it wouldn't just be for legal requirements. There would be other options included in that extenuating circumstances.
Yes, I mean, there may be someone who's having a very bad, I don't know, I'm making it up, mental health day and they think they have a bad hair day and Tom might say, you know what? If, if you can wear your hat today, then if you, I mean, I'm just making that up. But there are, no, I, I just know though, at, at the high school, we, we would make exceptions, especially, you know, medical, religious, cultural reasons. We absolutely would. And we, and that's the piece that we've made consistent across all schools. So elementary through the high school. The rule is no hats or hoods. And, but except for the exceptions there. And then if some student may have anxiety or, or such and needed to, to do, there's certainly an exception for that too. So religion, religious, medical and, and or, you know, other.
And, and the Crown Act was passed in Massachusetts not long ago about natural and protective hairstyles, which absolutely by law are protected.
So you couldn't dress code someone for their hair?
No.
Okay.
All right. Well, since this policy was a part of the Innovation School, and I'm not sure all, everyone here understands what that was. Maybe it'd be helpful to know what exactly was just the dress code part of being the innovation? Well, maybe we should have a broader understanding of what that was all about so that we could understand this in relationship to the policy.
But we're also not one anymore. Does it matter?
I'm sorry?
We're not an Innovation School anymore. I don't know if that matters to you for this conversation, but.
Well, if, if it doesn't take too long, I'd like to understand, I'd like to understand how it came to be part of the innovation.
It was things like flexibility in the schedule. There were certain require, do you know them off the top of your head?
Like the genesis of becoming an Innovation School?
Or some of the pieces that, the, some of the pieces that I know about was like the focus, there was a focus on technology. There was a, a more flexible way to use the schedule. There was the dress, the literacy team.
I, sorry. Some lasting initiatives, one of the Dress for Success, but.
And the governance.
Yeah, literacy committee, the Warren Committee. And a good point of tech. But some flexibility in the scale.
And so it's not an Innovation School anymore?
No, those are lasting initiatives.
They're all lasting initiatives from that.
Some of them never made.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Not everyone has spoken. I just.
No, I know. It doesn't seem like everybody has something. So you can have your second speak and then we'll go on.
Staff member, I don't remember her name, at Lawrence, I only spoke to two staff members. She told me, she started the year that the Innovation Grant was put in place. And she said that it was, we received that grant as a response to the high level of behavioral reports and incidents. And so it was an effort to try and remediate that and the dress code was added on to try to make the problems go down. I have a quick question for Mary. What you were just saying about you have some exceptions if you have medical or what you were just talking about. Where this language has been crossed out because of MGH123 under six. And you've said that parents and guardians and students are responsible for ensuring students arrive to school in clothing that complies with the school's dress code. And then down here at the bottom, students will not keep their event with attending schoolers, will function, will be discriminated against so long as they're dressed in appearance. And it used to say, meet the requirements set forth above. And now it says, meet the dress code herein. Does that preclude in any way the exceptions for medical or?
No, right below that, it says the administration, paragraph ten says, may waive any dress code requirements involving extenuating circumstances.
Okay. And if somebody did not have a medical or religious reason for not wanting to, but they didn't feel comfortable, could they ask?
Yes, of course, always.
Not, not on a daily basis, but I mean on a, on doing, okay.
Okay. All right, so as it says, it's a first read. So this will come back to us at our Zoom next meeting.
Yep.
All right. Is there something else?
Now, we can go back to the first read on all the handbook policies. Mary's going to run through those.
Great.
So the first section in your handout is just clarifying that assault can include threatening remarks. It does not have to include physical contact. And that's important because you can, the legal definition of assault can include just the threat to commit an assault. And under the particular student discipline statute, which requires certain due process and also allows even expulsion for assaults. It's important to clarify that an assault does not have to involve a physical contact, that it can just be the threatening words that places someone in apprehension of that assault. So that just clarifies it in two separate sections of the handbooks. Fountain High School cell phones, they actually have been following this, but it was not in their handbook. So this is what Dr. Harris has provided as their policy. Morse Pond just revised some of their cell phones section. Very self-explanatory. Now, the Falmouth High School standards of dress, this has been in place for several years now. As you'll see, paragraph three, which referenced Mass General laws, chapter seventy-one, section eighty-three was crossed out because as it explains there, it's a local option statute that was developed with prior legal counsel that just didn't realize it was a local option statute that Falmouth had not adopted. It just eliminates some language that is unnecessary and it also, these, for, for example, hats and hoods are not allowed at Fountain High School, but it was not spelled out in the handbook previously. So now they have spelled out what is allowed and not allowed. And there's a portion for waiving any of that. Then we get to the Dress for Success for Lawrence, which is the one, so what you're seeing is crossed out. That was in the handbook. It had been revised over the years and this is the one that Tom's school has now proposed. And it goes through the, the daily attire, the relaxed dress guidelines, the guidelines, the PE guidelines. And again, that has a provision for waivers. Then the Morse Pond and Elementary Schools, they also have, Morse Pond and Elementary Schools previously just cited to the dress code policy in the school committee handbook, which is policy JICA. And they didn't have any details about what exactly was, was allowed or prohibited. So that has been changed to set forth the, the basic requirements that all of the elementary principals and, and Morse Pond principal have endorsed. And then the recommendation at the bottom, you'll see policy JICA as crossed out. It's a very vague policy. It's a mass policy. It doesn't actually specify specific guidelines. And there are many districts that just have their, just their dress code policies in their handbooks and they've gotten rid of the JICA policy in the, in the policy manual.
Did you say that was an MASC?
Yes. But if you read it, it is, it's very broad and vague and it's not, it, it doesn't say anything.
Okay. Any questions on the other handbook edit?
Oh, I do, of course. I'm sorry. We, I'm on policy committee, so I already sort of asked these questions, but similarly with the alignment and consistency across all grades, I, I disagree with, and I, I understand that we want to give deference to each school and to the administrators and to the educators. However, the use of electronics in school, I think, should be a universally applied policy across all schools. The Fountain High School does not have mention of smartwatches or iPads or laptops. And those are in all the other policy handbooks. They're, they're just not consistent with each other. And as, as I said, I do understand we want to give deference to those educators and people who are in the building. But because these are technologies that can have harmful effects on students, that can have distracting effects in the classroom. There's no consequence written in the Fountain High School policy. In all the other ones, there's a consequence. If your phone is seen out, such and so thing happens. If it happens again, you get a detention or whatever. Each other policy has something written in there. And the Fountain High School one does not. And then across the board, and I looked at the Elementary School and Lawrence as well, and they, they're similar, but not consistent with each other. And I again, find that confusing. If you start in one school and smartwatches are prohibited in Elementary School and Morse Pond and Lawrence, and then you get to the high school and nobody appears, that's confusing to me. So I feel like that's a policy that as a school community member, I think should be universal. And I'm not comfortable saying that it's okay that they're all completely different.
Is, is there? Is there a rationale for them being different? Before we say, you know, we're not in favor, I'd like to understand if there is a rationale that all, that they're different for different schools.
They ask, they ask the high school teachers. And this is what the high school teachers could live with. And so historically, we leave disciplined things and a lot of technical things to the administrators, especially the administrator, disciplined administrators and teachers. So. I mean, if you, we discussed, Mary, didn't we say maybe we could get, it was already, or did Lori call and ask why we're mediate about it? Didn't you?
Yeah, Dr. Harris said this is what the high school wants and. It was intentional. And actually, under the law, I, I know all principals confer with school councils, but under the law, the statute says that principal, schools with grades nine through twelve will confer with their school council and develop their handbook. And I know that Alan Harris has done that with his school council. So this is what they've developed. You know, I, I understand Katrina's, you know, she doesn't like that there, there's not perfect alignment, but kids of different ages do different things. And I know Alan went and Lori asked specifically about, you know, watches. He said, no, this is what the high school has preferred and this is how, this is what we'll enforce.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to make a statement that I did make at policy. We don't hold our high school students to the same accountability or the same level as we do our elementary and our youngest learners. So. In my opinion, referring and leaning on Doc Harris and his team for having more leniency and allowance makes sense as they are approaching adulthood. And I certainly don't expect a young adult to be held to the same, like I just said, the same standard as this later. This later.
Just a clarifying question, um. FHS cell phones, the first line. This talks about uh phone pouches, do we have phone pouches?
Yeah, yeah. It's not the individual pouches, there's, there are pouches that hang. Yeah, like a shoe hanging pouch that the students put their phones in when they enter a classroom.
Yeah.
And then I have one more question, if I could, I'm sorry. Um, the Morse Pond, if you get caught with a cellphone or smartwatch, et cetera, after the second time, you getting an attention? And according to this policy? Alright, that's it, just clarifying.
Alright, this will come back at our next meeting, um. And of course, if you make the things in between, you can email the policy committee. Thank you guys for working on it. Um, if there's no objection, I'd like to take um something out of order, because we have a number of people here from. The diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging and I don't. If you're, if you would like.
Yes, I would.
Okay, I figured you would, but I, you know, if there's no objection, we'll take that out of order, okay, Henry's, uh Lori's, whoever's taking it.
I, I first wanted to apologize that uh I'm excited every time to present, so. My excitement makes me do more and I apologize to Lori, but also to uh fantastic people. At the uh community members, and so um I have a lot of, of people that are here and I want to start off right away by saying that. Um, we're all about excellence and our real students. And we say the framework of excellence is D I B for diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, so we've got people. Here, it's not only students' role, but the staff's role, and right now, I just wanna just highlight. Uh, community members' role, so could I have the two people from the uh cultural world? Multicultural. Uh, stuff right here, so this is, what I want you to do is first identify. Who you are and then I'm gonna put something, it won't be noise, it'll just play, there'll be some. Images going on while behind you, while you're talking.
Good, that's great, okay.
Okay.
Identify yourself.
Okay, I'm Elsa Parchan.
I'm Yuki Konto and I have a parent, we're both parents.
Both parents and we're volunteers with uh, with the Coalition for Children and the school district. Uh, and we wanted to give you a tiny bit of background on. The uh annual World's Fair and multicultural festival that we've been doing here along with Henry St. Julian. About ten years ago, an immigrant from Northern Ireland living in Falmouth named Rachel Rude, you might know her. She was relatively new to town, she had married a man from Cape Cod, they had two young sons, she really liked Falmouth, but she felt like there was something missing. She knew other immigrants in Falmouth, but they seemed pretty invisible. She wanted to create some kind of festival to bring people together to celebrate different countries and cultures. She was joined by other immigrants that she knew in her effort, including Maria Schinkel from Argentina and Manansu Jo, uh, Jo, Jonas. Jonson.
Jonason.
Is that right? Okay, from Madagascar. Uh, they created the multicultural fair, which we've also called the annual World's Fair. And we've been holding it at Mullen Hall School and more than a dozen countries are represented at tables with crafts, arts, books, photographs, food. There's dance and music demonstrations from countries around the world. And over the years, the fair has drawn in thousands of visitors of all ages and expanded to include a dance demonstration. By members of the Wampanoag and Ho-Chunk nations under the leadership of Cameron Greendale, if you've ever seen him, he's fabulous. Two dozen volunteers work on the fair every year, local businesses like Stop and Shop and Shaw's donate food and drinks every year. The Coalition for Children and the Falmouth Public Schools are the backbone of the operation. And the Coalition for Children does all the administrative tasks, coordinates with school staff, orders the supplies on a shoestring budget. Without the Coalition, the fair would absolutely not happen, they are the professionals who get the job done and I wanted to give a huge shout out to them. I'm super proud of Falmouth Public Schools and Coalition for Children for supporting this effort for so many years. It's made a difference, I think, and I want to extend my thanks to the school committee for creating a community where this is possible. And celebrate it and support it every year, so thank you so much, it makes me feel warm and fuzzy every year. To see how much fun we have and how many people come together and celebrate diverse cultures from around the world.
And we hope to see you next year.
I, I'm having a hard time, I, I don't know what's wrong, I, I can't mirror, so there was a lot of pictures. And I'll, I'll just say one thing is that we have our Falmouth High School ambassadors.
Yeah.
These are uh early, uh, these are English learners, uh students that are now are part of it and they are. Not only they're volunteering their time and we really want to build that up, so we see them not as problems to deal with, but assets to shine, so they've been. Fantastic in our last uh situation we had, so that's my first one, I'm sorry for not pictures on there, I don't know what's wrong.
You can always send them to us.
Can I send it to you? Could I get my, my next two people?
I didn't know we were swapping out.
So my next, but no, let's have a question.
No, I don't have a question, but I want to thank the Coalition, since she said you do this, we should thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you, I agree.
Do not know all that she does on that day, it is amazing, so uh thank you very much. Uh, so again, we're continuing to uh build a, a belonging scenario, not only with. Our immigrant uh population and it, it helps all our population when we're dealing this, but also we've had this fantastic. Uh, Opal Lee Walk, can you introduce yourself and tell me the motivation for the Opal Lee Walk?
My name is Paul Glass and I'm here with my husband, Charles Evans, who is the co-chair of the um. Juneteenth Community Celebration Committee. Well, you know, last year was our first, I would say inaugural, uh Juneteenth celebration. Here at the St. Bonham's Church, uh held uh in, at Falmouth Times Square, Times Square. It was anticipated that we may have about fifty people and it turned out a hundred fifty people showed up. And it was a wonderful celebration and a testament to what was missing, I think. In terms of um the recognition of not just the holiday, but what was behind the holiday. And it was a learning experience for a lot of the members of the town and it was a great celebration for all of us. Uh, to that end, we decided to make this an annual event and we wanted to incorporate the Opal Lee Walk. And Opal Lee is the godmother of Juneteenth. And she symbolically walked every year before the holiday was um, um initiated. Two and a half miles as a um commemoration and a testament to the ancestors who were. Um, denied emancipation for two and a half years from the proclamation of um, um, the emancipation proclamation. That was identified and read as a proclamation to the enslaved persons in the state of Texas and. With that, um, um, that's symbolism, we wanted to recognize um Opal Lee who is still alive. And we wanted to make certain that she was recognized in a way and celebrated by our Falmouth community. And with that, we, we identified a two and a half mile walk that started out from Times Square. And walked around, um, you know, through Walker Street and uh Surf Drive and, you know, up uh Mill Road and. And back around to Times Square again, and it was um a wonderful celebration, it was a wonderful testament to the um, um. The, the idea of celebrating and, you know, incorporating. A lot of what we have here in Falmouth in terms of um inclusive and justice and equality. And diversity and respect, and I think that that's an important thing that we have um been about here as in Falmouth. Moving forward with um, with diversity, equity and inclusion, but more importantly, as a community. This is not just about marginalized communities, it's really about us as a community as a whole. And we want to invite everyone here, uh, at the, both the Falmouth School Committee as well as all community members. To join us on June nineteenth, which is the um, uh, again, the official celebration for. The Juneteenth and we uh want to recognize all of the community members who were part of the planning for this Juneteenth. Community celebration, we are the committee and we, um, my Charles and I are not the only committee members. So um, we have Sienna, uh, uh, who's behind me, we have several others who are here. And I just wanted to just yeah, give a shout out to um. Henry St. Julian, who was the impetus for getting us coordinated. And keeping us connected throughout the year so that we can keep, um, continue with this planning process and it turned out fabulous last year and it's. It's gonna be twice that this year, so we want everybody to come and celebrate with us.
I will add, the students did help with a lot of signage and those signs are gonna be used. In our school diversity, our day that we're gonna do Ju- Juneteenth is the June ninth and we'll have a performance, we'll have food. We'll have a whole day of performing, but the kids were uh doing the signage and that signage will be used. Um, at the Juneteenth nineteen as well, so, so we'll be, we'll be doing some.
And I would just add in terms of the walk, the signage was placed at two reflection points. Uh, as part of the walk and the signs were really dynamic, they were powerful. It was powerful phrases about justice and equality and freedom and it was um, it was a testament, we really just wanted to give a shout out and. A huge thank you to all the students who participated in making the signage and um making this celebration worthwhile, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you, man.
One question, Opal Lee, yes, still alive.
Ninety-one?
She'll probably be a sensitive narrator.
Wait, can we bring her up?
You know, we can, we can send a personal invitation to her, but we're not sure about her being transported. You know, um.
My last one, assume.
Well, we can work on that, cause it's for next year, how about?
Next year.
Well, related, is it something that a lot of communities do, um? That replicate like, like you've done, did you model it after someplace else?
In the larger cities and hats.
Yeah.
But not necessarily in the smaller communities like Falmouth, but we wanted to highlight fulfillment and make sure that Falmouth is aware of it. Understand what this purpose is and not just celebrated as shopping day or day out of work.
Yeah, if you're going to a major city, it's, it's really, really huge thing, like I was telling you, I came from New York.
Okay.
And it was really, really a major thing, even if you ever gone to New York and been to Coney Island. You go to the Juneteenth, you really can't even get them coming out because it's so hard. Everyone kind of comes in white and uh go to the water and actually they back into the waters. Uh, recognizing ancestors and stuff, so it's a really huge place in most of the larger cities. But is it, it is a national holiday.
Thank you. My last one. One, 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 thank you so much, so um I, every, every school has. Uh, has equity teams and every equity team has community equity partners and they are in. With the stu-, with the uh, with the, with the school, um. I think Mr. Bushy has one, he probably can help you with what happens there, so he's stuck around there, he can tell you here, but I've got two members. Can you identify yourself and tell me, uh, what are you doing at the uh, at the equity team? You start, identify yourself.
Yes, Sharon, Sharon Nunes and I'm the equity team partner for T Ticket School.
Can you put it back where it was, I'm sorry, just, yeah, Ryan can get you in the back, right in the middle, yeah.
Uh, so I'm the. Community partner, I quit for that equity team at T Ticket School. We started working with them, I think Sienna is gonna talk a little bit more about the background and what we've been doing. But uh, we started working with them last fall as they were establishing their goals for this calendar year and going forward. And basically as a community partner, I feel that I'm the advocate for what's going on at T Ticket School into the community. And to help the community understand the importance of the equity and some of the challenges that they have. And you know, sometimes I'm not involved in all the discussions as appropriate, but it's been really great to support the teachers and. As all of the interviews in the enterprise for the school committee race said. The teachers and staff that I had met have just been phenomenal, it's just been wonderful to really get, I was very involved with my kids when they were in school. And with the school that they went to, so I'm actually pleased to be able to help on the other end.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Sienna Malusi and um, just a real brief background of community partners. Were when Henry took on and decided he would love to make this Falmouth a beloved community. We took that to heart and tried to figure out how we can bring the community to support the schools here in Falmouth. And so one of the ways we looked at, as we talked about developing of the equity teams, maybe a good way to get. People from the community was to have one, one or two members of the, in the community, support each equity team. At each school, and again, one of the things is we don't offer advice, we're bringing resources, so. What the school does, we're just bringing resources and support, and let me give you an example, I'm currently working with E East. Public school, my real life at school, and um. One of the things that the equity team wanted, they wanted a more cohesiveness with their staff. And they wanted to find ways to get together and a party equity, a part of uh, the community partners. We try to provide resources so they can do some of the things, because listen, teachers are busy. And we really want to be able to support, so we are preparing a breakfast. For and getting donations so the teachers don't have to do anything. We're just there so that they can, we can provide time in the morning to, so they can have their time to talk, but we'll provide food and like a social environment. So they can talk and also maybe suggest what ways, things that, what other things they would like to see done at the school, we're the support. And we help provide resources to any equity team with anything they would like to solve and one thing that. Sharon said that is also imperative. If a meeting is not conclusive for us and it needs to be something that's handled at the school, we're not there, we're only there as a resource and as a support. So that the school feels that they have a way to implement some of the things that they're thinking about with the, with their teams and how to make their schools better.
Thanks, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you.
So. So we talked about three things, we talked about the uh, the multicultural fair, the uh Opal Lee Walk. And this community equity team partners, I want to thank you for allowing me the extra time to do this, I, I, I really wanted to do something special, like I remember my time, so. I, I won't let that happen again, but my conclusion is this, we are staying the course. In uh this community, we're making sure that we're, we're doing it, uh, we are very grateful to the staff, the students. And the community partners, especially for tonight's uh people that are here together and with your commitment, we want to shape. This community into a really beloved community where everyone can thrive and just say, this is my, this is my town, so that's my.
Thank you. Just love it, thank you so much, thank you, thank you all for coming, I'm sorry you had to wait so long to share it, but it was great news to hear, thank you. Okay, okay, back in, back to the original order. Uh, first read on the policy B E D H, public participation at school committee.
Yeah, so this policy was updated to include appropriate protocols uh for public comment, including stating full name. And the address, village and or precinct, um, this falls under the school committee goal two. Uh, we're working in tandem to ensure that all information is consistent uh in all locations of.
Comments on this one, but.
I'm wondering if we could um. Table this one until our subcommittee has a chance to flesh out some of the recommendations that we would like to be integrated into this.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing, so um, as you all know, one of our goals. For this year, the school committee goals for this year was to revisit public participation. Updated as needed, um, and so that the goal two votes, Glenda and I are both on that group. Um, have been talking about suggested changes to public. Just public comment, and so I'm wondering, so.
We've already gone through it, so if you guys want to hold it, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be for, this is first read anyway, um, so if. If, if public, if policy doesn't have an issue with it, maybe we would, would, put it not on our next agenda, but the agenda after, so that. Goal two has a chance to coordinate with you guys.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think that sounds fine with me.
Great, alright, awesome, thanks policy folks, thanks Glenda. Uh, and of course, if anybody has any other additions to. To this, get a bunch of policy votes. Okay.
Rena loves to get letters.
Yes.
Um, based on when you asked the question.
Um based on when you asked the question and Margaret asked the question, we got in the innovation school and just looked it up real quick. And because my answer wasn't adequate, the innovation school initiative was part of an act relative to the achievement gap. Signed into law by Governor Javon Patrick in Jan- January twenty ten. It allows schools some freedom from state guidelines to address local school needs in the areas of curriculum, budget, staffing and professional development. And it's all the changes that we made at Lawrence, including the student dress code, scheduled changes that allow the students to take a variety of classes. And carved out staff development time during the week where team teachers can meet and discuss student progress. It also speaks of the literacy component and it was voted on by the staff and the school council at the time.
Thank you.
Thanks for that stream. Uh next up is first read on the calendar.
Uh yeah, so uh it was uh under my leadership that I started establishing that we would have um. Uh the calendar voted on and approved two years out. Uh I usually bring this in March, so I apologize for the um little bit late on this. Uh except we've had some really great conversations, so as you know, uh we always share this with the uh FEA. And uh review the the calendar and the reason we had additional um conversations about this particular calendar. And may I remind you, it is the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar, so um not to get confused with next year. Cause this will be two years out, um is because of how late the um Labor Day is. So as you notice in September, Labor Day is on uh September seventh of twenty twenty-six. And there are uh many districts that already go before Labor Day, um but uh the districts don't go before Labor Day. Uh often when it's this late, they go before Labor Day in those particular years. So um FEA uh and uh our admin team, we've been uh discussing it. And we came to the conclusion that um we would like for one year only to give this a try to see how it works. So as you can see, uh for teachers, uh they would begin on August twenty-fifth. And on that Tuesday, that would be the normal time for teachers to start, it would be the last week of August. What would be different on this calendar, if you approve it, would be that um students would start on Monday, August thirty-first. Which would be a week before Labor Day, so students um would attend Monday through Thursday as a four-day week. All staff and uh students would be uh have the long weekend. It would be Friday the fourth through uh Monday the seventh, that would be Labor Day weekend. And uh and then we would have another four-day week starting on Tuesday, the eighth through the eleventh. And then we would get into a normal routine. Now, on the flip side, if you look at the back end of it in June, and here's one of the reasons um for the discussion. As you can see, with this calendar, if we start the four days before Labor Day, then the last day of school is on June sixteen. And if we have any weather contingency days, we we would be up um to June uh twenty-fourth. If we go after Labor Day, the last day would be um June twenty-third. And we would have weather uh contingency days up through June um thirtieth. So that's that's the difference, it's starting four days before, but we end in mid-June. Uh or we start after Labor Day and we could run clear up to the end of um June.
And can you add about why we have to finish the state?
Oh, and then to say we, you have to finish by the last day of June, uh so that's, we have, hang up, the live one or after. So um so that that's really the uh only change um on the calendar, everything else uh pretty much follows suit. Um we still have the same number of early release days, we have um a half day on December twenty-third. Uh which has been our practice the last few uh years, um and. Uh oh, and then the other thing that would change, I'm sorry, I wanted to make it be go back to June. If we move, um if we go to after the Labor Day and our last day is not till the twenty-third of June. Then graduation would be a week later, it would be June twelfth. Uh if we go before, it's uh would be on the first Saturday. As it as our normal practice and that's because the there can't be more than twelve days be between the. Um last day of school for seniors and and then the uh last day for the rest of the students. So that those things would change, the we're presenting to you um to try something for a trial basis to see how it goes.
Any questions on the calendar? Okay.
Well, I don't have any questions. I am gonna make a comment. It's well known that I said I would die on hills, that we will always start school after Labor Day. Because I think it was imperative for our own students, our own children to appreciate the full Cape Cod summer that a lot of them don't get. However, because this came from FEA and um after much discussion. I think it's reasonable. So anyway, I um I know that I've been very public, that I would never uh agree to before starting before Labor Day. But I think that this is a a good example is to when we should, this one time.
Okay, uh and of course, if you think of anything, we can share or we vote on it at the next meeting. Uh okay, next up is act on policies.
Yeah, so um we had first read on policies BDE uh subcommittees of the school committee on. IJ NDB responsible use policy and uh I'm sorry and.
School and district webpages.
I, yeah, I IJ NDC school and district webpages. Um we did have a first read on the uh BDE dash R permanent committees and other assignments. But there were some um questions about that, so I'm taking that back to policy subcommittee. But the other three, uh we've had no uh request for revision, so as standing is the first read.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what did you just say was going back twelve seats?
BDE dash R, permanent committees and other assignments, there were, there have been some things that's been brought to my attention. So I think we need to go back to policy subcommittee on that, the other three, we've had nothing, so. It is, you you've been vote tonight, you so choose.
Okay.
Can I make the motion?
Uh for all of them, or are you making a motion to take them together?
No, R went back.
Yeah, okay.
No, these three, since nobody contacted us, yes, all three of them.
Okay, so this would be taking all three. Yes, okay, just double check it, um all three, BDE, IJ, NDB and IJ, NDC. Um all approve all of them together, there's a motion and a second, is there any last comments on this one? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any extensions, that's unanimous, thank you to the policy folks. Uh next up is acting on the K four report card revisions.
Uh as presented at our last meeting, Dr. Teller, Dr. uh Custodio, Karen Carson. Uh Andrew Sullivan and the teachers from all four elementary schools presented the timeline of a two-plus year. Uh for developing uh priority standards, aligning standards to reporting and designing a report card. The teachers have come to the agreement matches their practice, I'm asking you to approve the report cards paid before that have been. Uh thoughtfully developed and vetted and were shared in your packet.
Right, is there a motion? Thanks Melissa, second, second, Glenda, any last discussion on this, Mike?
I just have one, I'm gonna be voting against this, um I don't believe we have the full breadth of the faculty talking about this. I've heard some things against it, um I am also concerned with the change of work for the teachers when you change the report card system. And that is why I'm voting no on this.
Any other comments? Okay, that was quick, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any extensions? All right, go past this, thank you.
But I I after it's passed, you're probably not supposed to say anything, but um I just wanted to say um. I hope we can find a little extra time for parents to get affamated to this too, so. Is that in the plan?
They do have a a full plan for the um fall, for the well before on the first report card in January.
All right, update from Student Services, I'm gonna turn it right over to Sandy, she has a few uh updates for us.
All right, so back to school bash is listed first, I um. I received an email from Julie Williams-Tinkham at um the director of the recreational center. And she had reached out to myself and a couple other folks um from Falmouth Public Schools and asked if we would be interested in collaborating. On a fun back to school bash for our whole community. So that is a, uh we've had two um two or three planning sessions. And essentially what we're going to do is try to invite um some community members. So already in our back to school efforts, we work with the Falmouth um uh service center. They often have backpacks that we can give out um to students who might not have the supplies to go back to school. We work with um Falmouth Human Services, but this is going to be a much bigger effort. Um we'd we'd like to have um materials and resources for families, um some clothing, sports equipment. From Falmouth Public Schools, we're going to try to have some informational tables. So things like general information about the back to school forums, health information, athletics, VIPS. Just everything I'm I'm reaching out to um, we'd have the uh back to school, like a little bike rodeo for kids. Um so we have Safe Routes to School, I had reached out to, I'm gonna see if we can get YMCA there so families can learn about the before and after school programs. And uh maybe Lucini to, you know, determine things about the bus route. So it's supposed to be a really fun, exciting event, so if you wanna mark your calendar, we have a date of August twenty-second from four-thirty. To um six-thirty PM, we had to plan something after the road race. So hence the late date, but we're going to really flood everyone with uh save the date informational flyers. Before the end of school so that everybody will have that on their calendar, so we're really looking forward to it. So hopefully this will be a first annual back to school collaboration bash.
At the rec, right?
At the rec center, yes.
That sounds so fun.
Okay, not quite as exciting tiered focus monitoring. So this is again, one of the uh compliance initiatives um for special education to support students. So at the start of this year, I had said that in the previous year, we were identified as having two areas um. In an audit that were of concern, meetings, um some timelines for when families get IEPs. And then the second area was having enough peers in our uh preschool program. So during this school year, we had a corrective action plan to um try to fix both of those situations. And we um we had an audit, an onsite audit about a month or so ago. So a person from Desi came, they audited our files to look specifically at these areas. And along the way, we've had a produced progress reports and evidence of training for everyone, et cetera. And um we passed, so this is um this is great, so now we're, we have corrected um those actions. Um another area of um compliance, we received a letter a year ago. Two thousand twenty-four uh January and the district was identified as needing assistance. So in this area, um there was a rubric that they had used. And Falmouth had been identified as needing assistance in our five-year cohort graduation rate for twenty twenty-one. So this is older data and our uh twenty twenty-three MCAS scores for the ELA um in grade eight. So essentially, the the reason we were identified was because our, uh they do a comparison of uh all students. Comparing to students with disabilities and then we are compared the the gap. Um in performance between the state information. And so our our gap was um higher than compared to the the state averages. So this during this school year, um Audrey Riley, the assistant director and I, we've attended a few conferences. We um conducted our root cause analysis, we had a team of um other staff members for Falmouth Public Schools as well. And we were looking at the data that we had and through that process, we reviewed a lot of the um data. At the high school, looking at the um. Essentially, the the credit requirements for graduation, the program of studies and the instructional support team manual. So that's the the process for the uh the MTSS process that we've talked about. And looking at um students who are struggling, students who withdraw, et cetera. So after we, after we looked at these things, we were um instructed to put together an action plan of things that we want to. Um put in place so that we can improve in these areas. So we submitted the action plan in February and I've sent a reminder email. Cause I have not heard back yet about our action plan so that we could start to implement it. So we have already received the next letter that says we're um still in needs of assistance, but that's not surprising because we haven't moved forward on it. And then the last little update's just about preschool, um so we will have our ten sessions of preschool next year. Which means we would have a total of one hundred and fifty slots for students. We have um again, I had explained before, a variety of of programs that we're offering. With more increased opportunities for full-day programs for our pre-K and um. And like a multi-age classroom that's for three and four-year-olds and then we still have our AM and PM session. But right now, all of our peer slots are full. And so we do have a waiting list of about a dozen students. But that's not all just for the full-day programs, we do actually have some some families who are looking for um the AM or PM sessions as well. So when thinking about and planning for preschool, we're we we are um. We don't have a lot of open slots for for this year coming up. So we use our data to plan for the upcoming school year from early intervention. So early intervention starts working with children and then once the children are two years, nine months. The school will do an evaluation and determine if the student needs to have the support of our um preschool program. And so it's kind of a moving target, we have a list from EI right now of all the students' birthdays who will occur. Um next year, we don't know necessarily that those students would qualify for the a slot in the preschool. But you can make some guesstimations, so it's pretty likely that we may end up having to create an additional classroom mid-year. If if all of those things, you know, turn out that way. So there's also other things that could change on June, I think it's June twelfth at the rec center. Um the preschool does a screening, the the staff will screen all of the students who are going to be peers for next year. And sometimes through that process, some students are identified um as needing uh IEP. So then they might change from a peer slot to a a a special ed slot. Remember, we have seven students, you know, on IEPs and a for the um peer slot. So then that might open up a slot for somebody who is on the waiting list because that student are, so it's kind of, it's it's uh it's a moving target, right? It's always, it's always moving, but just to kind of put that on your your radar that we could possibly do that next year. So I certainly am uh sharing that information with the building principal and thinking about that, you know, when we're setting up the school at the start of the year. So we'd be, we'd be poised and ready if we need to do that.
Questions for Sandy.
I wasn't quite clear about why there might be a change mid-year, could you re-explain that or?
So so currently, we we don't have a lot of open slots in preschool, in the current sessions. And we know from early intervention that there are a a number of children in our community. Who are currently identified as having special needs. And so when the school system evaluates those students, they may end up needing the support of our program. And we might not have a, we might not have room for them right now because we don't have enough open positions.
Maybe I misunderstood, but did you say you have to evaluate in the middle of the year or it would change in the middle of the year?
Yes, so so we're required to evaluate students when they turn two years, nine months.
It would be the next year that it would affect, okay.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sandy?
Sandy, do you have your notes um like written down or like essentially what you just said?
I do.
Could you form them to me, not just myself, I don't know if anybody else. I just um I find that.
Oh, the numbers, yeah.
Just the numbers and um just essentially everything is just.
Okay, she can share it for me.
That'd be great, I still wanna.
Yeah, I'd have to tighten them up a little.
I just wanna like have something to like look at and move over and compare and just getting all my stuffs together.
So all all of it or just specifically the preschool? Just the preschool?
Please.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, sir.
Are we at a point now where we know what kindergarten registration or is that still?
On the right, on the, on this wrap, okay, thanks so much, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, oh, you really are, you're up next. Thank you. Oh, you really are. You're up next.
I am next, but uh, the first is uh, human resources. Um, a couple of you have asked for that to be on the agenda. So um, we had a, a human resource uh, director between August of two thousand seventeen. And June of two thousand twenty-three. Um, and as far as I know, that was the only H R director that Falmouth Public Schools uh, had. Other than that, the H R department fell under the business office. Uh, and for uh, one year now, that's also been the case. Um, there was one year prior to that, that um, we had an interim business director and the H R. Um, office fell under uh, my office. However, I'll talk about uh, how many of the, the roles of the H R department is actually uh, divided out. But uh, before I get there, as of March one of two thousand twenty-four, we promoted Stacy Stokes to the assistant director of finance. And she became uh, the supervisor of payroll uh, and H R. Um, she has been in the business office. She had been um, uh, helping out with H R. Because there's many functions that cross over both the business side and the H R side. And putting her in charge actually helped integrate um, those systems. She's um, building strong systems and connections and making sure that we're um, the functions that overlap are working seamlessly. When our H R assistant um, uh, admin assistant uh, resigned, um, I hired an H R uh, manager. Um, Bonnie Donahue was an H R director and worked in the business office as well. So she understands the crossover from uh, the business office and H R. And she is working with Stacy to ensure that all those uh, systems are functioning uh, well. So we are getting ready now to post for the permanent H R manager uh, as planned. And uh, Bonnie will stay on in her role to work with the new uh, H R manager. Uh, until that person is up to speed so that everything is just um, uh, systematic. Uh, and um, and we've actually worked through all the systems um, and making sure that we are uh, functioning as well as possible. So some of the H R um, functions uh, is licensure. And Dr. Tellier um, has, uh, did licensure before we had an H R director and uh, it returned back to her office. That makes a lot of sense. Um, I am impressed with um, how she has taken this uh, this licensure process. And uh, has become very customer friendly. Uh, we've gotten a lot of uh, feedback. Um, from the help that she's been giving. Um, and first that required uh, to really develop the systems in place so that we know exactly where every uh, licensed um, professional. Uh, stands. And then she started meeting with uh, periodically uh, with those that um, licensure was coming up. To make sure that it's a smooth transition, that everyone uh, uh, continues to maintain their license. And most important that sometimes we have people that are on emergency license or waivers when we hire them. And there's a very short timeline. And so Sonia has been working to create plans to ensure that people get to that point of time. When they actually have to move um, to an actual license. So um, she's done a great job and I appreciate that uh, and that will stay with Tellier. Um, the hiring process uh, in um, school systems, the hiring process. Uh, lives with the principals as the hiring managers, as well as the directors when they're hiring people in their departments. So um, that has not changed. That's always been uh, the process. Um, they review the postings, they make any changes, they ask the uh, H R admin assistant or manager to post the position. Um, the hiring managers uh, interview the candidates, they call references. Uh, they recommend the person uh, to the uh, admin assistant uh, and uh, for the onboarding process. Uh, and then they call and email um, the candidates and it, that is a full process on the hiring. Uh, the onboarding offboarding is uh, an admin assistant uh, or manager position. Um, that includes doing the queries and fingerprinting, uh, collecting all the paperwork, setting up their emails, making sure they have access to all the systems. Uh, and preparing all the uh, the letters. The queries and fingerprints was actually um, uh, sent to Mary's office when she was here full-time. And then I took over this past year, um, but um, uh, Paul Dart, sorry. I don't know why I did that. Poor Paul, I was looking at, you know, I'm sitting there and he's not sitting here tonight. Um, but Paul Dart um, has also been working with me, uh, assisting uh, on the queries and fingerprints for the last six, six months. Staffing has uh, always uh, lived with uh, out of my office with me and uh, working uh, very close with the business office. Um, currently, uh, Paul Dart is the director of finance and operations. Uh, and then that includes our entire admin team and that's the uh, directors and the principals. Uh, that's been a consistent practice over my tenure and um, will remain there as well. Um, complaints is another area uh, in the H R department and title nine complaints are managed by Sonia Tellier. Uh, bullying complaints by Sonia and Sandy uh, and or the principals. Uh, and if we have staff complaints, they can be handled anywhere from the principals, uh, to Sonia and Sandy, uh, Mary Gans. And or at times we contract with outside services um, to help. So um, and that's been pretty consistent with and without an H R um, director. And then um, things have, have been running fairly smoothly. Um, and I don't plan to add a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollar a year admin to the central office. Um, as an H R director, especially at this time when the budget is very tight.
Questions on H R?
Mike? Just one, I don't know the woman's name, but someone, you said a woman had went from payroll to H R just recently? Is that what you said?
Well, we um, Stacy Stokes has been in the business office. Um, I think um, right after I was hired. Um, and then we promoted her to assistant director of finance. And she uh, is managing the H R and payroll because of the, the functions that are overlap.
What's the other woman you mentioned?
Bonnie Donahue.
Thank you.
Is that, okay, I'm sorry, okay, Bonnie Donahue, um, I hired as our interim um, H R manager. Because she has uh, in her whole career, she's been the H R director and worked in business office. So she understands that the overlap and what we're trying to achieve in our consistent systems. So she's here on the short term um, to help Stacy make sure all of our systems are uh, in place. Before we hire the manager, which we are now ready to uh, post for.
And then one follow-up question, if I could. If Stacy does payroll and now she's covering the H R stuff, is there?
She oversees payroll.
Okay, are there other people working there?
Right, so in the business office, um, uh, Jenna um, is our uh, nice last name. And I know, sorry, she's fairly recent. We hired uh, Jenna, she's doing a great, she's doing a great job. And um, uh, Jenna B, what I can tell you. And she, I'm sorry, what is it?
Belbinon.
Oh, you know, thank you, that is correct. I just lost her name. Um, she is actually, she does payroll.
Okay.
Yes, so Stacy oversees the H R uh, manager.
Yeah.
And the payroll person uh, in the business.
And Donna here was helping Stacy with the H R stuff.
She's doing H R right now until we get our manager in place.
Thank you, Erin.
I think perhaps it was rec, there was some confusion because you said somebody resigned. That was the word that I heard and I was gonna add.
We, we had uh, a uh, H R admin assistant that resigned. We're moving that position to an H R manager.
And the H R manager is not the same as the one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar admin.
Correct, correct. That would be an H R director.
Oh, okay, so H R manager and director are different in what sense exactly?
Um, probably will have a, a bit more um, responsibility than an admin assistant. Um, but not as um, much responsibility as the uh, H R director.
Okay. Yeah, did you have? Oh, I'm sorry, the other question, it went a little fast. Um, staff complaints are resolved by Mary, I wrote down, but you, you named a whole bunch of things.
Right, so some staff complaints can be taken care of by principals. Uh, it could be um, Sonia or Sandy, could be Mary Gans, or I would contract with an outside um, firm to handle them. And all of which is taking place.
In terms of kind of the conflict resolution or, I guess in terms of just overall management of personnel. It sounds like a lot of it is kind of up to individual schools and principals. And I was wondering, are there policies in place to kind of maintain consistency between how those policies and rules are followed between? Schools so that um, you know, a staff member who, who has a conflict. The process for kind of resolving that is kind of the same at another school. Uh, so just to maintain this consistency within district, is there?
Yes, good question. So yes, as far as the hiring processes, we do have the same consistent practices across all uh, principals and directors. As far as complaints, um, Mary Gans has done extensive training with all principals and directors in the process. Of how all of that's handled. Um, and she's consulted usually throughout the, the process.
Okay, um, last question, you said offboarding, does that include exit interviews? Is that what offboarding?
We do exit interviews, correct. Um, they um, we do a survey of uh, exit interviews. And then the last question is if they want to meet in person. I will say because of the type of um, relationships that our um, hiring managers have with um, our staff. Um, often uh, informal interviews are done as well when people are leaving. So um.
Is there, I'm just wondering, sort of like what Chris was saying, is that a consistent policy or exit interviews always administered? Are they always the same?
The survey exit interviews are always administered. That doesn't mean that everyone will fill one out. And a formal exit interview um, is offered to everyone. It's up to them whether they actually take that. But informal happens as well.
And are those documented or is that just informal, like it's a conversation that happens and it's never, there's no part of it that's? Like in their record in our, in our record, you know what I'm trying to say? Is it informal in the sense that there's no documentation of it is what I'm trying to say?
Uh, there's no documentation, doesn't mean that there's not discussions.
Right.
Yeah.
Tell me, I asked one, the exit interviews, that's for a man, that's not for the school committee, I'm assuming?
Oh, no. Personnel, but yeah, good question.
All right, although I will add, we did start doing exit interviews for school committee members. You did? A few years ago.
You did?
We did. That's a great idea.
Yeah. All right, enrollment um, for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six kindergarten enrollment to date is a hundred and sixty-four students. Um, compared to last year at the exact same time, uh, we had a hundred and eighty-three. Uh, so we are down a little bit. Um, but I also would like to say that our official October one, two thousand twenty-four kindergarten enrollment. For this current year was two hundred and two. So even um, we went from one eighty-three to two oh-two. Um, and then uh, so we're one sixty-four and hopefully will um, will increase some. I'm not sure that we're expecting to get as high as the two oh-two though. Um, school choice, uh, we have received twenty-one new applications for the twenty-five, twenty-six uh, school year. Twelve uh, are kindergarten applications. And I will say that North Elementary is at its max. Uh, so um, anyone requesting North, the, the, there's just no, no seats uh, at this time. Uh, last year, um, total, uh, just as a reminder, we had forty-six uh, schools choice applications, twenty-one were kindergarten. The forty-six also, um, I should add, the forty-six was also those that were in Falmouth. That left um, during the year that asked to stay. So that grew, that number grew also because they were Falmouth residents, but, but moved out for one, one reason or the other. But wanted to continue their education here, so. Um, and that happens uh, at least a few every single year.
I have a question. Could you please send me that information for the same request that I asked for Sandy's? Actually, that.
That was a lot of numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you, just like in um, yeah.
All right, yeah. All right, um, state budget, um, two areas of the state budget that I've been focusing on and uh, watching very closely. Uh, is the chapter seventy and the circuit breaker. Uh, this chapter seventy funding uh, right now, uh, by the, both the House and Senate Ways and Means uh, committees. Have agreed um, to move the funding per pupil to seventy-five dollars a student, uh, to a hundred and fifty dollars per student. Um, this is continued, um, uh, seems to be bipartisan support and continues to be creative. Uh, creating very positive discussion, uh, so very helpful uh, in that uh, area. Uh, as well, the circuit breaker, which I'll remind you is uh, the funding at the state level. That reimburses districts at a certain level uh, for out-of uh, district uh, placements. Right now, um, the uh, they reimburse after you meet the threshold at seventy-five percent. Um, again, in both the, a House and Senate uh, Ways and Means um, have agreed um, to move that. Um, to a ninety percent reimbursement level, so it's from seventy-five to ninety. Again, it is continuing with positive momentum. Um, they've also um, have agreed that the threshold where you qualify would increase. I'm sorry, decrease, sorry, the opposite, decrease, it's wrong, I'm sorry, decrease. So the threshold would decrease and then the amount of reimbursement would increase. Um, we don't know, you know, of course, this is very early on, but um, I feel it's positive momentum enough. But I felt like I could um, say this, of course, we still have um, over a month. Uh, before we'll know anything for sure, but I do think it's very positive. I just want to say that, you know, we've shared um, you know, our increase uh, costs in special education, especially the out-of district. Um, you don't get um, support by both the House and the Senate and our legislators. Uh, if it was not a, a, an issue across the state, it's not an issue in just a few districts. Everyone is experiencing uh, as shared also among superintendents um, in the, in this area, so.
Thank you to our friends in Boston.
Yes, thank you to our friends in Boston. Uh, we do a lot of advocacy and I do a lot of uh, sharing and talking with our legislators. Um, as do other superintendents with theirs. All right, um, chronic absenteeism, uh, I know um, that we uh, were identified. As being um, having an issue with chronic absenteeism. The state just released their uh, March uh, one data. The state uh, reported uh, that they are slightly better. They went from nineteen uh, point six to last March one to this March one at nineteen point three. Um, so a slight improvement. Um, I am going to, which, which is still better than where we are. And I am going to report that our Falmouth uh, chronic absenteeism has actually increased. So we were at twenty-five point two, last year we were twenty-nine point seven this year. We will continue to encourage our families um, to send their kids to um, to, to school. Um, and you know, try to take action, but we, it is still an, an issue. So I will say that our overall attendance uh, data is holding steady. Um, but it's the chronic absenteeism that's at ten percent or more uh, of absences. Um, and so we, those are the areas where we're also.
So, so that data, twenty-nine percent have ten percent are absent ten percent of the time or more?
Yes.
Okay.
Laurie, do, how are we in the state compared to the state in that? Do you know how their chronic?
The state is nineteen point three.
Oh, okay, I wrote that wrong, okay, I'm sorry.
It will be interesting to see in regards to the last time this data came out. This was not just a Falmouth problem, this was a Cape Cod problem in particular, and it's families taking vacations.
Uh, that seems to be consistent over the years.
Awesome, that was my question. Um, is it the October Disney vacation? Is it, do we have a, is it a, a problem with um, transportation? Like I miss the bus and my parents or guardians have left for work? What is, is there a, a theme, do you know, is there a?
I don't think that there's a thing, like you think um, vacations, um, you know, there's. Um, you know, some parents of, and this is just anecdotal. That don't live near their families, do extended times um, to visit families so that the children can, we get to know the, the grandparents. Or the extended family, um, which certainly makes sense. Um, we don't have a correlation of of chronic absenteeism and lower grades. In fact, um, the students tend to keep up on their work. And so we're not seeing that type of outcome as, as we've, you know, started the last few years to, to monitor that. Um, I am sure that, you know, it could be miss the bus and. Um I am sure that, you know, it could be missed the bus and can't get there, there could be some of that.
Are we seeing this uh K to twelve, or is uh is there a percentage at a higher uh grade or school? Like, is it um Lawrence School has a higher percentage of chronic absenteeism than um the elementary?
I think it's a very good question, and when we did the analysis before. Um it was kind of a frost at schools, um but we'll be digging in deep again to just to just to look where, if we do have particular situations.
So that was related to my question is, what are, now that we. We, you know, we have to start somewhere, so we looked at it last year and now we have it for this year. What are we? What are we gonna do to like dive into the numbers and try to figure out where we can get, you know. The best bang for our buck focusing on getting it to school, whether it's the transportation or the vacation or whatever.
Right, so um what we had uh decided before was that each school would look at. The number of students um and they would look per month, and so if, as we know that if you miss more than two days per month. You're going to hit that chronic absenteeism by the spring. So looking at early on. And making sure that we're making specific phone calls uh at the elementary schools, um you know, calling home and. In saying that we really want your kids to school, you know, but the principals themselves are making those. And with the students as they they come in is really making a big deal about how excited we are to have you here. Um we still make the phone calls uh and similar practices all the way up through. Is that we are watching them, we're making phone calls, we're trying to figure out what the the issue or concern may be. Trying to work around that, figuring if we can help the families out um in any way. I know that across the board, we will continue that, um but just kind of digging down to see if we're seeing changes. Um it's, you know, certainly um. I have been watching um the uh attendance rates for our multilingual learners. Being a particular concern uh of late. It has actually improved uh since January, uh so I'm I'm glad to see that. Uh but a particular concern uh in in that area is so, um so we'll be digging down deep for school.
And then I hope also looking if there are places that are having success and improving it, that we borrow.
Borrow their, their good ideas.
I just said, I guess the overall question, is there any repercussions for this chronic absenteeism? Like detentions or holding a student back, because it seems to me. It seems that if you miss eighteen plus days a year, there's no repercussions, but you get caught with a smartphone twice and you have detention. It doesn't make any sense, like, I mean, I understand you're trying to entice students to come, but then there should be some kind of a. Repercussion, cuz I mean.
Uh so when we look at um, you know, our our youngest learners, um we know that uh they're dependent on. Transportation, they're dependent on their parents to give them school. Um so it it doesn't seem fair um to. Have a consequence for a student when the parent is actually responsible for the parent, for the students to be in school. Um so it's 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 hard, we have that discussion a lot, but it's it's um. The the, I think that's where it kind of comes down to, that that we are really concerned of punishing, ma- many of the students want to be there every day.
But they're not there every day. So that's concerning, I I don't really care whose fault that is, I'm just more concerned about getting the kids in the school, cuz. I, or or taking away athletics or extracurricular, because there's there's a reason why kids go to school, whether it be social or academic or. Extracurriculum and if students aren't going to school. I don't know if this is still the case, but I remember like in in high school, if you missed school that day, you couldn't play in the game. That's that's a punishment for student athletes, and the same thing with students in the choir or the band. If they don't go to school, they don't get to play the instrument or sing. So why aren't those like similar repercussions across the board?
It seems different to me though, because, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, at, I would speak to more of like the elementary level where they, we do have programs like the Keep Them Coming program. With the District Attorney's Office, and then when there are families that are. Um well, the student is struggling with attendance, but we know that the family needs support, just like Dr. Durr said, it's. You know, it's the the family that is supposed to be supporting the students to get them to school. So we we invite them to a meeting and try to see what resources or things that we can put into place to help support attendance.
Yeah, but the absentee is a third of our students, it's not like a handful of of families that need help, unless a third of our. Parents in this town aren't doing it. It's just, I I don't think that if the numbers are increasing. There needs to be some other way to bring people in, and I don't know if it's both positive and negative, but that's it, I'm sorry.
Um so anecdotally, as a parent of an elementary school child and having talked mostly Mullen Hall kids. A lot of it, some of it is vacation, personally, we've missed six days this year for vacation. Um on three different instances, it was like a day here. Most of it, though, is illness, and one thing that I've realized is that a lot of these little kids, they're getting sick all the time. And you don't wanna send them in sick, cuz they'll get everyone else sick and they don't feel well, but that's categorized as an absence and. There's no differentiation in there, and so some of this chronic absenteeism, at least with the littler kids, could be that they are ill. Repeatedly throughout the year, and there's no way to parse that out, it sounds like.
Yeah, we were like saying, that's a COVID and hit the number. And right, and we did have this winter, another um. We had the flu, several, yes, we had the flu, we still had uh COVID, and thank you for reminding me that.
Yeah.
Um cuz I didn't mention the the illness, and that that is uh certainly something. And and parents are encouraged to, again, keep parents' kids home if they are sick. Uh and it, there is no distinction between excuse and unexcused when it comes to. Yes, thank you.
And I think we had talked about this before, that just because, or maybe it wasn't this, it might have been with a different context, that. Even though the state doesn't make a distinction, we could, and it might be really helpful for us. To look at the data in that way and try to figure out. What the, what the number really looks like if you are just looking at kids. If you take out the kids who are sick.
Okay.
We can always, we can always that. Can I just add one more thing, Laurie just reminded me. When, when I as a parent and other parents discovered that when you get a note from a doctor, you still get the same result as if you didn't give a note.
One second, DM, DM, I'm sorry, so I'm having a really hard time concentrating.
Um when you take the time to get a note from a doctor, but it's still, you don't get any different result, you still have that thing on your child's report card. That says you've had this number, it's um disincentivizing to categorize it at all, so if you want to have that breakdown. I don't know how you would address that, but that was a realization I came to this year. There's almost no point in getting the doctor's note.
Did you have, you had something else, right?
I was just um getting back to Sandy's comment on resources to get kids to school, I know that I've asked this before. Uh if a parent identifies as my child missed the bus, I've already left for work, there is nobody to get my. Child to school. As a parent calling the school, does the district offer transportation to go out and get the student? Is that? So that the student doesn't end up in an absence and fall into that chronic absenteeism? What are we doing to hold up our end of the bargain to, other than a conference, like I hear with a conference, but. I'm just sort of thinking um perhaps we're barely holding on. At, in a family and a conference is just going to send parents sailing over the edge, like I I barely can get my act together to. To just do the basic things, and so what are we doing? Are we offering? I will come, we will come and pick up your student, what are we doing?
I think, well, I think each situation is is different, but Falmouth Human Services has um just. Lots and lots of supports for families, um and it can, it could be um. It could be financial for some transportation that could help them also with their work and other demands, so. Which, we we do have just a plethora of resources within our community. And often those are the things that the families need to help work the schedule together, and transportation, that, you know, it it. It, I think it just, I guess it's an individual um.
In the moment.
Yeah, right.
The bus tomorrow, my husband and I are gone, they don't drive, nobody's around. I have called the school looking for help, what are we doing in the moment to help the families? Anything?
Could I just recommend that we put this on the agenda as a a standalone item and let Dr. Dorr get through?
Honestly, it's just a question that I've had before, it's okay, move on, I don't wanna hold that.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Quick comment, you know, hearing kind of the rich discussion, maybe it's something we can consider as we're approaching. Goal setting for district and superintendent that we can, you know, it sounds like there's a lot that we can tackle here as a district, so. Just wanna kind of put it on the radar as something.
And clearly a lot of interesting and trying to fix it, so, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Can I add something to the?
Please.
Uh for the, for you're talking about um what consequences, we do have, we do have like um. The high school, the the high school, they have the credit appeal process, so their credit is taken away and.
Uh thank you for clarifying for that, I'm not trying to punish.
Yeah, definitely different, for sure. Alright, communication.
Alright, so um based on the feedback from the school committee members and the FBA survey um. Uh where I need to improve on communications, my team and I have been visiting um all the schools. And talking with the uh the staff about um how we can improve our communications uh here at the central office, uh and me in particular. Um you know, how can we increase two-way communication, what type of uh information they would like to receive? Uh when and how often? So this has been the basis of um our discussion. And we visited five of the seven uh staff meetings uh so far. Uh and so um I will have a, after we visit the the next two, I'll have a full um. Uh kind of report on everything that's been said. Um but um just recently, uh we have decided as a team that we are going to send out a communication for just staff on Thursdays. Uh the letters will include um the type of information that we're hearing that they wanna hear about. Uh and each of our departments will have an update, so those will, um those started last Thursday and uh we will continue. Uh for staff-only um updates. Um they also talked about um increasing the number of times that I get in the building and walk through. And I have to tell you, it's very rewarding, the staff was actually saying that they want to see me and they wanna hear. So happy to do so, um and so we will, um so I'll be increasing those um even this year. I'm going before, but I'll have a full report on everything soon. Alright, thanks. And um the uh quotes and quotes, I'm gonna turn turn it over to Dr. Tellier. I'm gonna say something about our annual.
So this is the collection of um the winning poems from this year, this is our eleventh annual event. Um we have poets who submit uh from kindergarten all the way through our staff. Um it's become a bit of a friendly competition in different grade groups or in staff groups, um. We wanted you to have that. Each of the winning entries is uh follows with an invitation to join us at Highfield Hall. Um at the end of April, which is National Poetry Month. And they read and they come up to the podium, we start with their youngest, right for our staff, it's actually a really powerful journey through. Personal uh identity formation and development, um as you get to carry that uh. But we wanted you to have the collection from this year in print, um and so next year again, we'll open it up in. In March, uh they submit, and then at the end of April, once again, we'll be back at Highfield. You fill our whole space, but it's worth getting comfy and cozy.
It's provided there, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Totally, and so just a couple other things for uh Professor uh Zeta. Uh Vera is uh back in the States with us, um our sister school partner. And she'll be visiting tomorrow uh at our schools, meeting with our teachers and students, excited about that. Um Building Needs Task Force is meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. Uh the F E F, F E F Teacher Grant Awards is this Thursday um. At four o'clock, the VIP Celebration, um the annual VIP Celebration is next Tuesday. Um at five thirty, uh Lawrence Spring Concert next Wednesday. At six thirty, and the Falmouth High School Awards Night is next Thursday, um June fifth at seven. So lots of things here at the end of the year that's exciting, I hope you can enjoy one or one or all. Uh and then before I close out, um the uh the updates, I just want you to. Look at the um display here around Clipper, so I know that uh goal three. Um is one of the things was to start using the Clipper experience more, and so we thought this might help you out, and so I. Asked my creative team, uh Dr. Tellier and um Andrew Sullivan, if they would um. Put something together, and so this is a start. Um we will be adding more things as we go along, but you could add things as well. But what you will see is the um actual um definition for each letter. And what it means, you see some pictures of uh students that uh is exemplifying um the letter. And we have some quotes, uh I started the quotes the last meeting, and now we've got some more quotes up for you. Um that you can actually see, and so we'll, we'll just continue to work on it, but we hope that this actually helps.
Thank you.
Not only the queen of flyers, but she's also good at.
I I sort of wanna go back to quotes and quotes, uh maybe I should have talked to you about this, you know, I've been to the um. Conferences, and every year there's a company that publishes the essays that the students write. And I've brought this back every year, and they would welcome essays from our students, and so maybe I'll bring you the information. And maybe you could encourage them uh at all levels to provide. The English teachers to encourage his students to submit it for publication.
Um before we go to routine business, I have a motion, can I? Um and the reason that this has to happen, this meeting, is because Robert's rule says that if you table a motion, it has to be. Brunt tabled during the next meeting or it is dead. So after speaking with uh one or two other um committee members about how. We could maybe do this in a way that would have a better result. I would like to make a motion to take, can I make a motion picture? Um to take from the table, the motion that we tabled last time, to rescind our vote and remove items one and two of navigating the future. And to clarify the purpose of taking this motion from the table would be so that we can amend the motion. Such that the new amended motion would stipulate, and we would have to do this after we've taken from the table, obviously, but I just wanna make it clear first. Um so that the new amended motion would stipulate that T-Ticket and East Falmouth will no longer be the only schools under consideration. In that navigating the future letter, but so that they would not be taken from future consideration by the Building Needs Task Force. As a result of rescinding our vote. Does that make sense?
No, I need to. So the first step would be that we're going to make the motion to take from the table. Got that. If we can do that, then I would make a motion to amend what he had said.
Okay.
So that it would say. We are stipulating that T-Ticket and East Falmouth will no longer be the only schools under consideration as they currently are written in that letter. That we're trying to rescind. But that they would not be taken from future consideration by the Building Needs Task Force as a result. And the reason for that is that there was some concern that rescinding our vote would mean that T-Ticket and East Falmouth. Cannot be considered for the preschool in future.
Got you.
So this would just make it possible for us to clarify that and possibly just resolve this in such a way that we don't have to. Bring it up anymore.
Got it. Okay, so there's a motion to um.
Oh, and I'm sorry, the the other reason for this is that the NESDEC report, which the Building Needs Task Force is supposed to be responding to. Does not mean East Falmouth or T-Ticket, and so it is my opinion that they should not be in navigating the future, so that is the reason that I personally. I'm doing this.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, it's not debatable, just like taking from the table is not debatable, or tabling and untape, whatever, if you know what I'm saying, they're not debatable. Uh all in favor of removing it, uh bringing it back tonight, say aye? Okay, I, I, oh, I don't know how many that was. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, some motion, uh opposed? Three abstentions? Okay, uh so that brings it back for, would you like to make your amended motion now?
So the amended motion would be that we stipulate that T-Ticket and East Falmouth will no longer be the only schools under consideration. But they will not be taken from future consideration by the Building Needs Task Force or ourselves, I should say, as a result.
Uh discussion.
May I speak to that, please? The reason it was tabled before was because we are expecting a report from the Building Needs Task Force, approximately fifteen people. That have been working and discussing since September. We do not have that report yet, and until we have that report, I feel this is pretty premature.
Any other comment, Mike?
Um, yeah, before we have any report from the Building Needs Task Force, we already have named two elementary schools. So I feel that was a little premature to name two schools without having any data whatsoever. And that's why I agree with Katrina's motion.
But the way I'm understanding this, this does not preclude. The Building Needs Task Force from recommending T-Ticket and East Falmouth from merging. It does not. It just. Says that will be, tha- that will not be the only option considered. The reason that I am supporting this now is because I never voted for, and I don't believe any of us ever voted. To merge T-Ticket and East Falmouth. We voted for a letter. That said, I want to um, I would like to start anew. Move this to the side so we can get this. Get get this, uh give the public some sense of whatever they need. So that we can move beyond this at this point in time. I think this might do it. And so that's why I am going to support this.
I just. Yeah, like the Building Needs Task Force should have the opportunity to come back and present to the school committee. I don't wanna. Uh, and I said this before, um, I don't want to um disrespect the time. That the people on that committee have put in. Um, so that's why I agreed to table it. The last time. I just want Building Needs to have all of the options available to them.
Alright.
Yeah, um. I don't disagree with the notion of of that any school in fact can be merged from the other school. And I absolutely uh agree that I did not vote for T-Ticket and the East Falmouth to be merged, nor did we here. Because I made the motion and it was that we meet again and that was um. It was, it was not, um, we did not have an opportunity to discuss it, and that was the committee's fault. Okay, I'm gonna blame the committee. It was no one else's fault. It's the committee's fault that enough people didn't say, yes, we want to talk about this, so we want to understand it more fully. So I don't disagree with that, but as far as I'm concerned, there have been other recommendations. I mean, I asked. I made a recommendation. Was it taken to the task force? Was my my recommendation read at the task force? There have been lots of recommendations, so I have to tell you, I don't think East Falmouth and T-Ticket are supposed to be merged. And that has ever come to this committee or any committee person or anybody. I certainly, and I don't think anybody else in this committee has voted for that. So in fact, in some ways, I feel this is irrelevant. If if it's gonna make the community happy, you know, but uh. There has never been that this was what we recommended, planned for, and was going to do. I don't know what I'm gonna do. There's lots of stuff, you know, I've made a recommendation, I I have reasons to uh support my recommendation and I'd be will be glad. And I want to hear the, I want to read the report again. I want to hear what the committee says, and so it's. I can't vote for it because it's it's irrelevant. It's not anything that that we have voted for.
Until everybody has a chance. Yeah, go ahead.
My goal is clean slate. It doesn't mean you don't look at the work this they have done. It's just that. Here's a clean slate. Take this work and put it over here. Somehow I just don't have a sense that there's a clean slate where the Building Needs Task Force to write its stuff on. If there's things on it already. That's, that's not, again, not. Taking all the work that they've done already and put it over here.
So, um, you know, I agree with Margaret's statement that I don't, I don't think that East and T-Ticket. Are being merged. I don't, we're nowhere near that. And you know, my objection. To the motion is really just procedural. We set the ball in motion at the start of the school year. And then we handed the ball to Building Needs. And they had. A set of things that we had written down. They have a set of options from NESTAC. They have the recommendations from community members, from school committee members. They have every imaginable option. And I don't see the point in trying to restrict. What we've asked them to do when it is our job to make the final decision. It sort of feels like trying to. To put our hand on the scale now when we know that the final decision is ours anyway. So it doesn't feel appropriate to me to to try and limit it in any way. I I. My full understanding of Building Needs is that they will take any option. Ones we thought of, ones we haven't, ones they've thought of, ones other people have thought of, and everything is on the table for them. And it's our job, once their recommendation is made, to make the final decision. I don't think it's appropriate. For us to weigh in on it now, when our job is at the end. Um, Chris, did you have anything you want to say?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think, I think a lot of us have the same goal in mind and. And I think it it seems to me to be based more procedurally than than I think overall outcome, you know, I I think. You know, I think it was in the beginning kind of fumbled a bit. You know, I think the the ball was fumbled there and. You know, I I'm still a little unclear in terms of kind of the building needs, what they're considering. You know, I kind of see it as where this eliminates some of the restriction. You know, a a little bit. I mean, that's that's my personal view. Um. You know, I'm kind of with with Terry in terms of, you know, it'd be nice to start with this clean slate and I and I would like the building needs to know that. It's a clean slate, like like they can come up with whatever options they have. So for me, I think this vote for me is more. Maybe more symbolic if it helps to ease a few of the community members' concerns. But I think at the end, we're still gonna take whatever information is presented to us. Think about it critically, rationally, and kind of make, you know, as best as we can, unbiased. You know, uh an unbiased vote. Um, so I think, you know, this may or may not make any big difference. For me, it's just more of a symbolic thing than it affecting the actual overall outcome.
Uh, can I ask our Building Needs folks, uh do you, do you think? That would be related, you know, do do I, do you think that the idea that we're we're actually trying to reduce restriction? Would make sense to them? Or do you think they would feel like we just turned over the apple cart? It's fine if you don't feel like you could answer that.
I'm just speaking in regards to over the years and all the many, many school building needs task forces. That have been before this time. And by doing this, we're just. We are totally setting the apple cart because it's not fall and I want this.
That's fair. I just, I didn't know if you have any thoughts or if it had come. Okay, second comments, okay.
Um, I think it is a perception thing that we, with our proposed plans, have given them a suggestion. So it is just procedural and perceptions, trying to reset it so that there's no perception that we have given an instruction to the Building Needs Task Force. While asking them to give us their advice. The other thing I could have done that I thought of doing tonight was to make a motion to refer this. To the Building Needs Needs Task Force. We have this conversation happening. Can we refer this to you? Have you have this conversation, do your research, talk about it, and then report back to us on June tenth or June twenty-fourth. So that is another option. If people would like that, we can amend this, and if they don't like it, they can put T-Ticket and East Falmouth back. They have the right to do that, and then they can refer to us. Their recommendation that it should be East Ticket, T-Ticket, I'm sorry, East Falmouth and T-Ticket.
But your motion already allows for them to do that.
It does, exactly. So if we amend this as it is right now, we can then refer it to them and it will. We will formally have given them the opportunity to discuss this and tell us whether they think that this is a valid um concern.
If you would make that amendment, I will vote for it.
I made the amendment. If we can pass this as amended, then I can make a motion to refer that and to the. Otherwise, I'm referring Mike's motion, which is to completely get rid of one and two.
No, you've already made a motion for the amended version and Mike seconded it. That's what we're talking about.
But after we're done, if we approve that, then I can make a motion. We would still be in the motion. If we approve the amendment, I can then make a motion to send. To refer our motion to the Building Needs Task Force.
I'm still clarifying, it's just, I mean, not to change anything, but I just want to remind, none of these were plans. Right? They were proposed plans to get feedback on them. So I just want to, you know, sure, I mean, a couple of you said, you know. That, I mean, we've never voted on these. These were what we put out for um to get feedback on. I I just, I'm not, I'm, you know, and I I'm not saying to vote or not, I just want to be very clear. These were never plans. In motion. The only plan that the school committee has voted for is to turn in the application for MSBA for the renovation of Lawrence. Everything else, there were proposals, as is everything else that the building needs wants to hear or not to hear. So I know, I just want to just remind people, these were not plans we voted on.
Just for clarification, I think it was the November meeting when I was sitting here, I talked to the chairperson beforehand about how to rescind a vote. At the time, and I still believe this is what the case is, the voting on that letter was us voting on the proposal as written. So there's no reason for Katrina to rescind anything if we hadn't already voted. So we did indeed vote on proposals one and two when we released that letter. That is why I had to rescind it previously. And in November or so, I sat here and we discussed this, and at the time you had said that the letter was a vote. So we have voted on it. The issue is that it's very messy because that's not how you're supposed to do things. So all this is doing is taking T-Ticket and East Falmouth off of the only options. Right now, those are the only options. Those are the only options in proposals one and two. Are to merge T-Ticket and East Falmouth, and after months of fighting. We, our superintendent pushed it back one year. The original plan was to merge those two schools in either a one-year rollout up to a four-year rollout. And that letter that we approved, that was our vote to do that. So again, if it wasn't a vote, there's no reason to rescind it, but we do have to rescind it because it was a vote.
So I think as what I've heard tonight. From, at least from Glenda and Margaret and Melissa and myself, I can't speak for everybody, but from what I've heard you say. None of us voted to merge East and T-Ticket.
You had said that proposal was a vote. We released that letter. That was a vote.
We took a vote to release the letter.
And the letter explains how we're gonna merge those two schools.
That is not what we did. We started the conversation with a number of possible options. One of which, and the most important of which, was creating this conversation. Where Building Needs would take this job and with community input, would figure out what we were gonna do.
There should be no issue rescinding it if there's no issue. They just rescind it if there's no point. Let's just do it.
Margaret, next comment.
I have, no, I have a question. I would like every member of this committee to say, when you approved the letter, were you approving? That this was the plan we're going to go forward with. When I approved.
I was not, no.
I was not, when I approved the letter, I had no intention that that was the plan that we're moving forward with. And I'd like to hear from every member of the committee how they felt.
I agree.
Melissa, I agree. Chair.
Can I have the question again?
Did, when we voted to release the letter, did you think we were agreeing?
No, we were voting, we were voting to present this to the public. That's what, that's what I thought.
Yes, it's just that it's still there.
Okay, so I just want, I thank you for posing that question, Margaret, because it is helpful for us to have said out loud. Where we thought we were. Um, you know, I had been working from this assumption and I feel like I keep saying it, but it's helpful to know. That others are.
But but therein lies the problem. There's confusion. And so I, who have. Previously consistently voted, um, I voted to table because I didn't think it was an appropriate time. Now, but now we have to have it off the table. I am voting in support of your motion. Because there is confusion. There's confusion by our committee. There's confusion by the public. And I feel that we just need to wipe the slate clean or and and just, by wipe the slate clean, I mean. Um, take the spotlight off of the original proposal and still have that in the mix. That's still an option. But it's among the options, and I think that that's, that's where where I am. And I think that's where the Building Needs Task Force is.
Oh, I completely, the bill, yes, I'm not gonna even comment. Does anybody else want to say anything before we vote on the amendment?
I, this is gonna unmuddy the waters. That's why I think we should do this. It's screams. Clean slate.
Okay. Alright, so the vote will come on approving the amendment. It's not approving the entire motion. It's just move. Approving Katrina's amendment to Mike's.
Does anyone need me to read it again?
Sure, sure.
So the amendment, the new amended motion would stipulate that the T-Ticket and East Falmouth schools will no longer be the only schools under consideration. But they would not be taken from future consideration by the Building Needs Task Force as a result.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Two, three, four, five, uh opposed, and it's, it doesn't matter, motion carries. And does anyone want to abstain? Motion cares. Okay.
Now, uh, before we vote on the motion, we do have an opportunity to formally, I could make a motion to refer this amended. If we want to, because I hear you that we want to make it their job, not our job, and I do hear you. That's why I thought of all this.
Go ahead and say it. No, I don't need to do that. I want to know.
No, I think you should.
I'm sorry?
It's appropriate.
To have another motion?
Yes, you can make a motion while you're in the motion. You can't do it before. It sounds like a song.
As opposed to mo. I don't think we need any more motions. We're throwing more more wood. We just cleaned out the river. Now we're throwing more mud back in. That's my opinion.
That's fine. It's just if it makes people feel better that we are not taking the job away from the Building Needs Task Force, that is not.
And that's why I asked you to make the motion, because I can support that. Because I think.
And I support that.
Yeah, I think it it does, it it solves the problem for me of not wanting to usurp our, the Building Needs authority. Um, because we're really, what you're saying is then it just pushes it back to them and which is what I think.
Which is, I think where it belongs.
I do too. Yes, I agree with you.
But I think it's important that we all agreed to.
Well, let's put a show vote. Did you write it?
Alright, I move to refer the main motion as amended to the Building Needs Task Force to research this topic and report back. No later than our next scheduled meeting on June tenth or June twenty-fourth, if you prefer that. So I move to refer the main motion as amended to the Building Needs Task Force for them to research this topic. And report back to us no later than June twenty-fourth.
Any discussion on? This. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining because that way I'm not muddying anything.
Two abstentions and the motion cares. Okay, minutes. Uh, act on the minutes from May sixth. Those are the short ones. Second? Did you say second? Yes, sir. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The abstentions? And then uh second, uh motion, motion carries, sorry unanimously. And then second is acting on the minutes from May thirteenth. It's the copy at your seat, not the one that was emailed.
Oh, what's, what was the edit?
Um, Garrett Carson's name was spelled wrong. Oh, I almost emailed that to share and then I was like, I don't want her to reprint the entire thing. Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments on these? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous as well. Uh, committee member report, thank you. Committee member reports. Anything going on?
Policy had a great meeting.
And we saw the results today. Okay, request for follow-up. Oh, also, uh, is tomorrow your last coffee hour?
I saw that. We have postponed it because of the services.
Okay. Request for follow-up.
Oh, I do.
Yep.
I was wondering, um, if, maybe it's the cheerleader in me, but I would like to go rah rah about. I would, I'm getting all wound up here. I wish that it's the last meeting, that'll get people. I'm getting all wound up here. I wish that it's the last meeting, that'll give people about a month to think. Could we all say something good that happened this year? And I'll tell you one thing that I would say was my trip to Cape Verde, even though Henry St. Julie was alive. Because it made the connections to for it, it, for our little elementary kids, what connections it's making. So that's what I would say. So I don't know if people would think that's too dreary or whatever, but I would request that we do that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, no, at the, at the last meeting.
No, you need some time to think about it, I guess.
Okay. Uh, next up is reorganization of the board. I turn it over to Lori. Want me to actually hand you the gavel? I don't have a gavel.
Alright, so here we go. Uh, we, I am going to open up nominations process for the officers. Um, actually, just the chair, uh, for the Falmouth, uh, school committee. Are there any nominations for the chair?
I love your teaching.
I would like to nominate myself. And I have some words to say, but.
I've got it scripted here. Where it falls. But thank you, Terry. Alright, so we have a nomination, Terry for chair. Do I have another nomination? Margaret.
I'm gonna nominate myself.
Alright, and Margaret, uh, we're gonna hear from you in just a few minutes, is that fine? Alright, any other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna, um, close, uh, the nominations, uh, and now we will let each. Uh, candidate, uh, speak. And Terry, you nominate first. I'm gonna let you and then Margaret will follow.
Okay, people make fun of my lobster paper, but it's just the right size. Um, I wrote a few sentences, um. Having reflected on this year's meetings, I feel some meetings were problematic due to her, and it happened tonight. Confusion over policies, protocols, and procedures. I found some resources to help with this in two professional organizations. One is MASC, which we all know, and I don't know how familiar you're, you are with the National School Board Association. For example, this is a protocols worksheet that I found. It's called, um, self-evaluation. This is from MASC. And by the way, if you live in Mashpee, their district is required to do a protocol. Um, uh, self-evaluation. So I, this is from MASC, and I just circled a couple of things that I think we could use. Or maybe not use, but just to show you the gamut that it follows. They talk about seating arrangements. They talk about deliberation. Um, reaction when you're not in the majority. And another one is individual member requests. We've had a lot of talk about that. So that's something that, um, could help us and, um. And the National School Board has a really good guidebook too for school boards, so I would look those, um. Because what I want to say is that next year, we're gonna have to make big decisions on major changes in our district. And guidance on protocols will help these decisions that we make together. And if you elect me, I'll look up more of this stuff. Cause it's cut and dry mechanics and it can only help. I don't think it can hurt anyway, so vote for Terry, my dearest.
Alright, Margaret.
I'm gonna say something first about transparency. My first year, um, after the election, someone who knew it very well said to me, you know, Margaret, it was fixed before you even sat at that table. And for the last three years. That has somewhat been it. People have made connections and made deals to get elected. And I find that difficult. I, I will tell you, I have told someone what I think my qualifications are. I have not made deals with anyone. And I also said that I mentioned to someone that I thought they would be a great vice chair. If I was chair, because one of the things, one of the skills I think I have is I really do understand. And this was brought to us at M, M, uh, MS. One of the members from the. I'm sorry, this is very uncomfortable. No, it's very uncomfortable for the Massachusetts Association. They said that it would be important for the chair to really know and understand every member. And what skills they have. And I think I do, I think I have that. So I'm gonna say, you know, I have been to two of the, uh, conferences. I went to the Summer Institute. I'm one of the few people that have done that. But I also want to talk about my experience. I've been a director of social work and a social work department for over twenty years. I ran Mercy College Social Work Program in Peak Skill, New York. Um, started with twenty students. When I left, I had four hundred and fifty. And I ran this, the Empire State Staten Island Unit. Um, program. I was the only tenured faculty with a group of untenured faculty. So certainly I have had experience in terms of running organizations, in terms of understanding. Uh, and I also think that I have been to and attended to listen to, um, what the responsibilities of the chair are. Thank you so much, Terry, for sitting that out, because I really went through all of that. And I think I'm quite qualified. Uh, over half the committee have been here for four years and more. And when I first got here, I was told that, you know, these positions rotate around. And that does not have, seem to have been my experience here. So I am asking you to consider me as someone viable to be the, uh, chair of the committee. Thank you.
Okay, and so now this is a roll call, uh, vote, so I will, um, call you by name and you will either say Terry or Margaret. Chris, I'm starting with you.
Off the door. It's a point of, point of clarification. In the past, and I'm okay not doing it, but in the past, other people have spoken, is that? How does that work? I just don't want to do it incorrectly. I don't want to speak, but. I just want to make sure, because we've had in the past, people have spoke, so.
Like as they're voting, explaining why they're voting? So like, if you wanted to go around and say why you're gonna vote before we vote, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if anyone chose to.
I, I'm gonna have to divert to someone. I don't.
Yeah, so.
That I did not ask mask about.
So you open, uh, for discussion and people can share how, why they support candidate. If they so choose, you just can't go and order and. Have people share as you go.
Alright, we are not gonna do roll call yet. Would anyone like to speak?
And it solved itself.
Okay, I'll add that to my, my list for next year. Alright, Chris.
Terry.
Okay, Glenda. Margaret.
Margaret.
Melissa.
Kelly, abstain.
Wait, I can't abstain. You didn't, you didn't.
Stayed last year.
Stayed last year.
I asked if I could abstain, and I've just met you all. Thank you for pointing that out. I completely forgot about it. It was a momentary flip. Uh, Margaret. Terry.
Terry, are you voting for yourself?
Oh, Terry.
Susan? Katrina?
Terry.
Mike?
Alright, one, two, three, four, five, six, um, and Terry has it.
Thanks.
And I am now turning the news back over to you for the next.
Next office is vice chairman, right? Okay, so I guess I take nominations from the floor for vice chair. Any nominations? Chris?
Um, I nominate Glenda.
Okay, Glenda. Is there another nomination? No, did I wait amount?
Okay, I'm gonna nominate myself.
Margaret. Anymore? Okay, so I'm gonna call out your. Does it people want to say anything? I'm sorry. You might want to fire me, my first job and I messed up all day. Is anybody want, do you want to say anything, Glenda, or?
Um, only that, you know. My goal in. How I voted this evening and how I would proceed is I think we need to, um. Uh, have civility and cohesiveness as, as a committee and, um, that's, that's, uh. How I'd like to proceed.
Margaret?
I've already spoken, thank you.
Could I make a comment? Does anybody else want to make any comments? I would just say that, um, Glenda has a way with words. Um, she can take a. Hairy situation and make a nice sentence about it. I've read some of her comments, so. One of the major jobs is answering letters, so I think she would be good at doing that.
I forgot about that.
Also, I think you have an English background, don't you? So. Okay, take now the phone names. Anybody else will make a comment? Okay. Do I have to go around the room or?
Roll call.
It's roll call.
Yeah, but how do I say it in first person? Chris? Glenda?
Me.
Yeah.
Me.
Margaret.
Glenda? Okay, did somebody count them?
Seven, two.
Okay. Okay, third office is for secretary. I will take nominations from the floor.
I would like to nominate Katrina.
Well, I would be to nominate Margaret.
And I would like to nominate Melissa.
Okay. Alright, so you heard. Would you repeat them?
Mike nominated me. I nominated Margaret. If you don't want, if you don't want, you can. Okay, I just wanted, I didn't know if you knew that.
Just surprised.
So just to.
I declined it.
You decline it? Okay, so I, not to start at the same spot, can we start over this side?
Um, and I will say that I nominated Katrina. I I sit next to her every meeting and she has multicolored notes. Um, the colors mean nothing. She told me. I don't believe her. Do think she would be good at taking notes.
Can't disagree with that.
Alright, so I started over there last time, right?
You started over here.
Mike, would you please say?
Katrina.
Katrina?
So vote for myself.
Okay, Susan? Terry?
Oh, Melissa has to say something about herself.
Well, I said it's their discussion. Nobody, I didn't hear from you, so.
I would like to promote myself. I think I've done a pretty good job. It is my professional job to take notes, to keep minutes. I don't, I've not had any complaints of being secretary. Um, I think I'm prompt. Reviewing them with, uh, Sharon, getting certifications, and I think I do a pretty good job at it.
Okay. Are we voting now? Okay, Melissa? Oh, I don't vote yet. I vote last. Kelly?
Melissa. Katrina.
Melissa.
Melissa.
Six, three, Terry.
Congratulations.
Okay. So now is it time to.
Now, moving to.
Okay. Do, can you read that? I know I'm supposed to, I don't have the cape on. Alright, alright. So I, I'd like to make a move to, make a motion to move an executive session to conduct strategy for negotiations. With non-union personnel contract to discuss strategies with respect to litigation, specifically the approval of a legal services contract. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for FEA units A, B, C, and D. Having a discussion, open session, may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position. Is anticipated the school committee will not reconvene into public session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Dylan?
Yes.
Yes.
None, yes.
You have to go last. Well, yes.
Let's keep this.
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing yet.
Okay. Alright, that's it.